Welcome, everybody, to the June 19th, 2018 Board of Commissioners meeting. Please silence your cell phones, pagers, and other electronic communication devices. Agendas are located at the back of the chambers if you'd like a copy to follow along with us. We'll call the meeting to order and we'll do a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance by Ms. Commissioner Deb Hancock. Thank you, Deb. Next on our agenda is the review and approval of the agenda. The moot. Moot by DeSanto, second by Hancock. Any discussion in public? Board, see none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next, we have employee achievement recognition. Department of Equalization will recognize Shannon Rittberger.
Good morning, Commissioner. Shannon Rittberger, Director of Equalization, and I wanted to come to you this morning to brag about a couple staff members, Dawn and Trevor. Dawn is not feeling good, so is not here. Trevor is here. Both of these appraisers in our office just achieved a professional designation by the International Association of Assessing Officers. It's an RES or Residential Evaluation Specialist designation, and they are the only two in South Dakota to have it. It requires five years of experience, multiple classes, and two eight-hour tests. They just accomplished it within the last couple of months. It's a big deal. Nobody else in South Dakota has it. There's a lot of people across the country, but a very small percentage of county assessors nationwide have it. It's an important thing. It is a way to recognize their knowledge and experience in the appraisal world, and I wanted to make you aware of that.
Thank you, Shen. Trevor, appreciate all the hard work you and Dawn put into getting that done and achieving that. That's a great milestone.
Chairman.
Ms. Hancock.
I also appreciate you, Shannon, because that leadership that you show to move your team forward is huge for Pennington County as well. So sometimes your team has to be pushed by other people in your department, and Deb just came up for her award, and now Trevor and Dawn. So that means you guys are really working forward and looking forward for the people of Pennington County, and that means anything you could specialize in or learn more of, it only helps us in Pennington County. So we really appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Trevor.
Next on the agenda is the consent agenda. I'll recognize Holly Hennies.
Good morning, Commissioners. Holly Hennies, Commission Office Manager. For public notice, the Board of Commissioners uses a consent agenda to act on non-controversial and routine items. The consent agenda is acted upon by one motion and vote of the board. Items may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda at the request of a board member or a citizen. Today's consent agenda contains the following items. Approval of the minutes from the regular meeting of June 7th, 2018 to acknowledge the filing of petitions signed by at least 25% of the eligible voters within the district, and set an election on the question of the formation and/or reaffirmation of the Cedar Gulch Sanitary and Water District to be held on July 24th, 2018. Number eight is to acknowledge disinterment permit, number 1220716. Number nine is to continue the authorization to purchase the two 2018 motor graders off of the Minnesota State bid to the July 3rd Commission meeting as requested by the Highway Department. Number 10 is to recognize and thank the volunteers for the month of May 2018 as submitted by Human Resources. And finally, number 11 is to approve the board chairman's signature on the SDDOT Railroad Right-of-Lee Joint Powers Agreement for weed spraying services as submitted by the Weed and Pest Director.
Thank you, Holly. Is there anything on the consent agenda that a citizen would like removed? See none, any from the board? Number six. Number six. Any others? See none. I entertain a motion to approve items 7, 8, 9, 10, and 11 on the consent agenda.
Still moot.
Second.
Moot by Hancock, second by DeSanto. Any discussion? See none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Item number six, the minutes of the regular meeting, June 7th, 2018. Mr. Fairby.
A couple of items. First, if you'd all turn to page seven. Everybody on page seven, on top of the page?
Not yet. Okay.
I'd like for our office administrator to read that first two paragraphs, if you would.
Well, I can read it. The first two paragraphs?
Well, the first paragraph and then the second sentence after the first paragraph.
Is moved by Hancock, seconded by DeSanto to approve subdivision regulations variance SV 18-03 to waive the requirements to construct a turnaround and approval of the minor plat PL 1810 with the following 11 conditions. The vote tied two to two with Buscrew and LaCroix avoiding no. Is that what you wanted to read?
And the next sentence?
With the approval from the second or Hancock rescinded her original motion.
That transaction wasn't in accordance with state law, and I think we all took an oath to the state constitution and statutory laws passed by legislature. 7-8-18 says when the Board and County Commissioners is equally divided on any question, it shall give a thorough decision until next meeting of the board, and the matter then shall be decided by the majority of the board. I don't know what you're going to do with that, but it's your folks' right to lead the law.
Well, I think we can look into this, Jay. Yeah, that was...
Without Jay Alderman with State's Attorney's Office, without knowing more, we all know that a two-to-two vote is a tie, and it does go to the next meeting. I don't know anymore about this issue, so maybe somebody can fill me in. Is my understanding different than that?
The following, you read further on, and then it says Hancock rescinded her motion, which it failed anyhow, so she made the comment of rescinding it. Then it was moved by Hancock, seconded by Buscrew to deny the subdivision regulations to construct, so it...
It took, I rescinded what I said, and so did, wasn't it?
I think, Jay, you can look into this later report back.
All right.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman.
Mr. ...
I guess the question that I would have is, this is a subdivision regulations variance. Is that under the same rules as any other variance? Even though it's not in a board of adjustment, so...
And the question then would also be, is it subject to the two-to?
Well, if it, yeah, if it gets two negative votes, it loses no matter what, if it's under those variance rules.
But Chairman?
Ms. Hancock.
But we, it was two to two, but then once me and Mark, if I'm correct, Mark, I shouldn't speak for you, but we listened to the information, and that's why we took it and said, we, you know, we don't want to do that. Once we learn the information, we'd like to move forward. So what I'm saying is that was taken off. That two-to-two tie was taken off anyway because we decided that, once we listened to the information, we didn't want to approve it. We had to deny it so we could move it forward. Do you remember that?
I remember that, Mr. Chair. But I do think that, I don't even think we even had the right to rescind it, if I'm...
Basically...
I'm bringing the rules correctly. We, we, once it was a two-to-two tie, if we had to go to the next meeting, it can't be rescinded, if I'm, if I'm...
That will be part and parcel of the basis for my research. I will report back when I have mine.
Okay.
Okay, duly noted. George?
There's a notion called prevailing party, and only prevailing party, according to Robert's Rules, can ask for reconsideration or rescission. Obviously, there wasn't a prevailing party. As I know the term, I know some folks probably don't agree with prevailing party or don't understand what prevailing party is, but there was no prevailing party.
I guess from the way I took this, now it's coming back to me, is what happened as it came back two to two, and then Deb kind of removed her vote because it was going to be tied. So then we took a revote, and it came back three to one in favor.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. DeSanto.
That's correct, but we didn't have, according to Robert's Rules, like I said, if I remember it correctly, we actually didn't have the, even the option of bringing them back for another vote. It had to move to the next. So I think that's, like Jay said, I think Jay needs to research this. I think it needed to actually be continued.
And this is probably obvious, frankly. This is probably obvious, but we're talking the last commission meeting, so I can review the audio as well from that meeting and try to narrow down the issue and get you an opinion.
Well, Chairman?
Ms. Hancock.
Can we vote today? Is that what George is saying? We should vote on it today?
This is on the minutes right now.
But I'm saying, so we'd have to put it back on the agenda.
I believe that's correct.
If you're asking me to research it before you take action, then I would need to do that before you take action.
I know. I'm just trying to help these people so they can move forward and not have to worry about our issues, so...
Mr. DeSanto.
Your actions, give them some, what are we going to do?
I would suggest you research it. We approved the minutes as written. I think Mr. Fairby's not contesting the minutes, he's contesting what happened. Am I correct, George?
Correct.
Okay, so I mean, really, the minutes are correct, he's just, that's the problem with how the action was taken. I think you need to do some research on that, and if it turns up, we'll have to bring it back.
Correct.
I believe that's right.
Okay. Thanks, Jay. You okay with that?
A second issue on the minutes is the page two canvas of the primary election results.
I can't hear you.
My issue number two is, I mean, issue, yeah, issue number two on page two, canvas of the primary election results. The motion carried three to one. I, I didn't vote.
Three to one makes four, George.
The motion did not carry four to one.
Three to one, you said, just a minute ago.
The minutes say four to one.
I'm sorry, you said three to one when you first said it.
Are you the chair?
Are you?
Okay, you guys. So item B is the canvassing of the vote, and it does say four to one, and Mr. Fair... That's enough, you guys.
No, he's calling me names over here.
That's enough.
You need to stop.
Stop, both you guys. Okay, he's right, the motion, it does say carries four to one, and it should read three to one.
He didn't abstain. He didn't say anything.
He wasn't here, I don't think.
Yes, he was.
Was he?
In the morning. He didn't say anything. He didn't say yes or no, so I was always told that...
Yeah, if he says, if he doesn't say anything...
Great, and you...
And I said unanimous, or I said four to one with...
With DeSanto saying no.
I did do that, yes.
So that's why I put it in that way.
If you didn't say nay or yea, it's considered approval. You... Mr. Fairby?
I listened four, five, six times last night, and you did not say, or I didn't hear you say four to one.
No, he said one no.
That's a lot different than saying four to one.
You have one no. Miss Jay, please clarify.
Thank you, Jay Alderman, again, with State's Attorney's Office. One of the difficulties, we all know about absentee, sometimes it's referred to as absentee voting, that's an oxymoron. An absentee is not a vote at all. You don't count it as a yes, you don't count it as a no. It's as if you're not even present, literally. And so when Commissioner Fairby did not vote, it can't be a yes or a no, he just simply didn't vote, so it's up to, in that particular day, the remaining four of you. And so I guess to say, it still passed, but it was three to one, not four to one. That would be the technically correct count of that vote. However, the difficulty is, and I know it's frustrating, probably the more responsible way to do that is to announce your absentee that you're going to abstain. Is that absolutely required? No, but Robert's Rules of Order also talks about, in deliberative bodies that are elected officials that have constituents they answer to, those constituents have a reasonable expectation that they would know if you're voting or not, yes, no, or none at all. So it's only reasonable and responsible that you probably should announce if you're going to abstain from a vote. What makes it even more difficult is if you don't utter anything. And so the board chair, and I can only imagine how difficult it can be, when you're calling for the vote, you can't tell if everybody voted one way or not, there's confusion. So what are you left with? Doing a roll call vote on every single vote you take? That seems to be unnecessary. If people would just simply utter, "I'm going to abstain," there's nothing wrong with abstaining. You're just not voting, but at least let the board chair know so that you know what the count is, you know how many people are actually voting. That would particularly be important if all you had is a quorum of three, and you need all three votes. It may be passed or it didn't, or you're in a variance situation where you have a quorum of three, but you need all four, and one abstains, now you have three, and you can't pass a variance. So there's a number of reasons practically why a board member ought to just say, "I'm going to abstain," or clearly vote yes or no versus just sitting silent. That would be my, I guess, overall observation of that. In this case, though, it sounds like it's a three-to-one vote, and it's still passed.
It does. I guess I would clarify for George if he's not going to vote. That's exactly what I do. If there's one no vote, I say one no vote, and I say who it's from. If, if this is going to happen at every meeting, that you're not going to say anything, you need to inform me, so otherwise I'll just call on you individually for every vote. Okay, so I, the board, do they want to adjust the minutes to read three to one?
The minutes should, Mr. Chair.
Mr. DeSanto.
The minutes should read three to one. I make a motion to correct the minutes to read three to one.
Is there a second?
No. I'm second.
Seconded by Buscrew. I'm not going to linger this out, it's no big deal.
I'm, Mr. Chairman.
Ron Buscrew.
We went through this before with the auditor, and I can tell you this, the minutes are not going to be changed. What's going to happen is, in this minutes today, we'll note the change. Am I correct?
Correction.
Yeah.
Okay. There we go. Okay, any further discussion? See none?
If I might, then at least the record is accurate. So somebody reviewing the record 10 years ago, they might have looked at two sets of minutes, but the record would be accurate.
Duly noted.
Now, I might say that Robert's Rules, say abstain means not vote at all.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next, we need to take care of the agenda, the minutes.
I didn't hear you say anything on that vote.
I didn't, no.
So you're abstaining?
So, did you say yes, George?
No.
I didn't say anything.
So you're not voting on the fixing of the minutes?
No.
So you abstain? Direct answer, are you abstaining?
I'm not voting.
So you abstain?
No.
Okay. Next on the agenda is approval of the minutes.
Do you hear my motion?
It's moved by Hancock, seconded by Buscrew. Any discussion on the agenda minutes? See none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries with one no from Mr. Fairby. Now we come to our regular agenda items. Request for support for the Consolidated Rail Infrastructure and Safety Improvement Grant from the RCPNE from Mr. Dean Grobman. I entertain a motion to approve...
That'd be my motion.
Removed by Hancock.
Second.
Seconded by DeSanto. Any discussion? In public, the board? See none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
I heard an aye from Mr. Fairby. Number 13. Ms. Holly.
Good morning, Commissioners. This agenda item is for the two open positions on the Pennington County Planning Commission. This is the first time that we've used our new process that the board approved last year. We had three applicants for two open positions. There was an interviewing committee put together that consisted of PJ Kahn over the planning director, Lori Litson, the planning commissioner, myself as the Commission Office Manager, and Lloyd LaCroix as the Commission Chair. Each applicant was interviewed, and the recommendation has been presented to you for the two applicants to be appointed to Pennington County Planning Commission, and those two were Jim Coleman and Ronald Smith Jr. The new process requires that the recommendations be put forth to you, and you wait one meeting and make the appointments at the following meeting. So today, we have two out of the three applicants here that would like to introduce themselves to you and let you know why they want to serve on the planning commission, and you are free to ask them any questions you may have, but the appointments will need to be made at the next commission meeting.
Thank you, Holly. And I will make comment that the interviewing process was very good. They went about 45 minutes to an hour long, a lot of information, and I apologize to the applicants for the misunderstanding, we thought we were moving forward with this, but they did a very good job. But who do we have here today, Holly?
Today, you have Ronald Smith Jr. and Sandra Rundy.
Sandra, would you like to go first? I think we're trying to go alphabetical order with last name.
Hi, my name is Sandra Rundy. Do you have a specific question, or do I just plead my case?
I think, just tell us a little bit about yourself so the rest of the Commissioners could learn something from you, and then if they have a question, they'll ask you.
Okay. I've been involved in the field of commercial real estate for over 40 years, 36 years of which have been in Rapid City. I live in the county, but I primarily dealt with Rapid City buyers, sellers, landlords, and tenants. The previous time was spent in Sioux Falls in Minnehaha County from '76 to '82. I helped people achieve their dreams, and so while as a general rule, I was called a salesman, in my mind, I was a dream maker because I helped buyers and sellers, landlords and tenants achieve their goals dealing with real estate. And through that process, then, I was involved with many, many aspects of real estate with the planning commission, Rapid City, and the planning commission of the county. I have dealt with zoning, rezoning, conditional use permits, condominium conversion, plating, replating, surveys, access easements, utility easements, setbacks, planned unit development overlays, planned unit development zoning. I also served on the planning commission for Rapid City. I fulfilled the term of a man who, who was, he was in the three-mile limit of the city, and so was I. I'm one of the few people, one of the few real estate brokers who has Shannon Rittberger on speed dial, because I would call him frequently. I would always verify the zoning for, you know, the proper use of it. You know, there are legal non-conforming uses, there are variances that are given, all of which would help people achieve their dreams. I, my mind is very analytically driven. My education, as you can see, was primarily filled with mathematical calculations, but there's a part of me that makes me creative, a creative problem solver, I guess is the best word, you know, the best words to use. I believe in helping people, helping them achieve their dreams. I understand and I recognize the letter of the law, but I also appreciate the essence of the law.
Thank you, Sandra, you did very well.
Any questions?
Any questions from the board? Ms. Hancock.
So why are you interested in being a planning commissioner, Ms. Rundy?
Well, I'm recently retired, well, semi-retired. If anybody wants to buy or sell any commercial real estate, you can still call me. I want to get back to the community. I'm involved in many, many other projects. I'm working with a couple of elderly centers. I took a 10-hour class at the library to teach English as a second language to people who are living here, who want to improve their reading, writing, speaking skills. I have a lot of time in my hands. My husband didn't retire, and so I am filling my days with volunteer, I guess I would be paid to be on the commission, but my other functions, I'm not paid for. I don't need the money.
Follow-up?
I guess you answered my second question, do you have time? Because a lot of times, we need people that show up for that position, so I asked that of the last people that had ran for this position as well.
Oh.
So I think it's important. You got to have the time, you have to do a lot of research, and meet with people, go out and see people's properties. I mean, it's a lot of work. It's a lot of fun. I've been on the planning commission for the city, so, but I enjoyed all the information I learned, so I think it's crucial that you have enough time. The other issue is, not issue, other question I had is, what other things do you do in the community to help your community? And you said both of those, so I appreciate that, ma'am.
Okay, well, good. I'm also on the Regional Board of Directors for the Goodwill, which covers the Goodwill Stores in South Dakota, Minnesota, Iowa. I'm active there. I'll begin working with the people who will be proled from prison to help them become employed in the, in the city and in the community. But I do know how to research information. If I do not know the answers, I know who to call. Like I say, I had Shannon Rittberger on speed dial. I've also done a tremendous amount of work over the years with Janelle Fink at Bisc engineering, and I have attorneys I can call on the so if I run into, into questions and issues that I don't understand. I think I would do a good job.
Thank you, Sandra. Need Deb?
Yes, ma'am, sure.
Does somebody else like to speak?
I would.
Mr. Fairby?
Couple of questions, if I might. One, have you been... Couple of questions if I might, uh, want to be involved in the comprehensive plan rewrite for Pennington County.
I'm sorry, what?
Have you been involved with the comprehensive plan rewrite?
No, no, I haven't. Um, I'm a state certified general appraiser. I, I don't appraise real estate, but I, I keep the license for continuing education and to keep the appraisers honest. But through, through the process of education, I learned about the highest and best use of real estate. And so to me, that would lend itself towards future land development in your comprehensive plan.
Mr. Chair, that wasn't really my question. My question was, we're in the process for about a year or so rewriting the comprehensive plan for Pennington County. And I don't know, have you seen any of the notices in the paper or boulembards or whatever? But have you been involved at all?
I have not been involved with it, no.
Okay. Another, if I might, Mr. Chair, uh, you mentioned three mile radius, three mile distance, three mile plating, whatever you want to call it around Rapid City.
Yes.
What's your thought about how well that works or doesn't work?
I think it's somewhat confusing to the general public. You know, when people live within the, the three miles, but they aren't within the city limits, periodically they have to conform with city planning and zoning regulations. It, it, to me, it's a confusing process. I also know, you know, I, I've dealt with people who, who are on the verge of annexation, dealt with people who bought liquor licenses in the county with the hopes of getting annexed into the city to improve the value of those. I have, um, witnessed, um, there was a case on Highway sixteen where a man donated, um, his house to his son, but it was in a larger plat of ground. It was owned county, but it was on the perimeter of the city. And, um, I can't remember the exact terminology, but, but the judge finally ordered a final. And I don't know if it was called a judicial deed or exactly what it was because the county, because in order for the land to be deeded, it had to be plotted, in order for it to be plotted, had to be annexed into the city. In order to be annexed into the city, had to have water sewer and a sidewalk. So.
To summarize, then you'd be in agreement with me that the three mile area around Rapid City or any other metropolitan area probably needs a lot of work.
Absolutely. Well, it needs clar- needs clarification, yes.
The government, the governance, who's in charge? Yeah, you would agree that, that somebody, legislature primarily needs to say, look, either the city's in charge in three miles or the county's in charge or some other body. You'd agree that you can't have two bosses, correct?
I agree completely.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Sandra.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. DeSanto has a question.
I just wanted to comment that after going through your resume, I, I think that you have extensive experience that would apply to this position. I, I really appreciate the business and civic activities that you've participated in and the education that you've attained. And I, and I'm, I'm happy you applied, Sandra.
Thank you. I'm, I'm very, very disciplined and, you know, very dedicated.
Thank you, Sandra.
Thank you.
Ron?
Morning Commissioners. Uh, my name is Ronald Smith, Jr., as they put on there. I rarely use that title, but, uh, in answering your question, uh, relative to why, uh, I started out in Rapid City, South Dakota, a long, long time ago. Uh, my fa- I'm a dependent brat. My father was in the air force. I left, uh, my permanent residence here when I was very small, five years old, returned every summer and worked on a ranch down by Custer, South Dakota, place I still consider probably my real home. Uh, went away to college, uh, returned in two thousand and seven, purchased property, which we anticipated would be our future, uh, retirement home with the caveat that we would go south in the winter. Uh, tried two different forays into that, one in an RV, which didn't work out all that well. It was great for one-time shot. Uh, built a house in Arizona and that was good also. But my heart's in South Dakota, specifically in the Black Hills, but South Dakota's a state. So, having said that, uh, when I returned, part of my goal was to, how to get involved and use some of my, uh, experiences and life's training. I became a firefighter and I've been affiliated with Silver City Volunteer Fire Department since two thousand and twelve. I am the, although it so far hasn't, uh, consumed much time, I am the, uh, secretary and financial person for the Silver City Fire District. And it's our attempt to rebuild that fire district and hopefully, uh, provide a better service to the community. Uh, it's about forty square miles and right now it's a little lacking. So, I'll be working on that. I have also volunteered and been appointed as a board member to the JWC College. And, uh, we're working diligently there to, uh, build a new facility. Uh, unfortunately not in Pennington County, but, uh, I'll be working towards helping students become leaders of the future. Uh, as far as my past experiences, I spent twelve years in the construction industry for a engineering firm doing primarily materials testing, engineering, inspection, uh, both, uh, new construction and failures, uh, the full gamut. I went to work for a large corporation, uh, 3M, as a supervisor of their, uh, US construction facilities. So, in that role, I worked with many planning and zoning committees on what we could and couldn't do as we built new facilities and, uh, used that experience to work my way into management of all facets of, of various facilities, up to and including plant management was my, uh, terminating, uh, position. I chose to retire early so that I could, uh, enjoy life and found that, uh, staying busy was also a big part of my life that, uh, was lacking just being retired. Having said that, I want to get back to the community. Uh, I think communities everywhere I've lived and I've served on chamber boards as, uh, business leaders, I, you know, I feel that community is, uh, important to, uh, to much of what we are. And then, uh, quite frankly, South Dakota is rich with opportunities as a community, in all facets, everything from rural living, which I enjoy, to community living, which, uh, I think Rapid City, if, if I'd like to live in a city, this would be a good one. I, um, I'm a quick learner. Uh, I understand, I don't understand all the details of planning and zoning, but I have experienced them. Uh, from that aspect, having moved to upwards of five or six different states over my career, I have been involved with how planning and zoning works, both in the residential efforts as well as, as I pointed out, in the, uh, industrial, uh, areas. I've worked with many, uh, state, local and federal government agencies, uh, from, uh, everything from OSHA through, up to and including environmental protection agencies and, and Homeland Security. So, uh, I'm familiar with working with government agencies. I understand we gotta follow the law or change it. And it's that simple. So, having said that, uh, are there any questions?
Thank you, Ron. I, I, and I was gonna ask Sandra the same question, but how did you feel the interviewing process went when you guys came in for, for the interview?
Well, as I pointed out to interviewees, it was interesting to me, uh, that type of process came into play in human resources in the corporate world back in the nineties. And I had always sat on the other side of the table. I think it's a good process. For one, everyone gets to hear all the questions and all the answers. And so it helps us form an opinion as to how the individual will interact with different people and, uh, perhaps answer questions that we ourselves hadn't thought of asking. So, I liked it.
Thanks. Did anybody from the board have any questions for Ron?
Sir?
I think.
Chairman? Um, so you said you're retired, sir?
Yeah.
Okay. I like, um, your resume, um, how you put leadership roles. As you see, this job, um, is not easy. And you said to enjoy life and you want to be on the planning commission, so. As you see, we feel a lot of love up here, but it's a job that, um, sometimes people are gonna get awful mad. And, uh, you know, they're not always gonna agree with you. And sometimes, uh, they have, you know, issues with your vote. So, um, being in leader, leadership and understanding the other side. And you said you were on the planning, a planning commission before?
I was what?
Were you?
No, I have not. I have experienced or worked with planning commissions. And yes, they don't always say no. I looked like Pennington County said yes, maybe to some important things that I had with my property, so. Good experience.
There you go. Uh, thank you, sir, I appreciate that.
Thank you, Sandra. Mr. Farabee?
If I might, Mr. Chair.
Did you speak in the mic?
Obviously, you've had a, a tour or two in management of one kind or another. Has never worked very well in your experience to have two bosses?
As a what?
Has never worked very well to have two bosses?
Well, I will, um, I'll put it this way. I have on occasion, when I was the facilities manager for the tape production in Hutchinson, Minnesota, 3M's flagship plant, I served twenty-seven different, uh, tape manufacturing groups. So, I will say, does it work well? It can work, but it requires a lot of compromise. Uh, it requires a lot of communication. Um, I think from a practical perspective on day-to-day activities, you can't have two bosses. But I do believe in setting direction and in, uh, making a, uh, decision that affects larger groups of people. You, you will have many leaders involved and you're gonna have to, you're gonna have to build a consensus and get the work done. So, I, I don't disagree. It's hard to have two bosses.
Let me be more specific. How would you like to be a, a South Dakota resident within three miles of Rapid City and have the city telling you what to do and have the county telling you what to do?
Well, I, I don't know who has jurisdiction. So, I can only give you my personal opinion. I think the first thing I would do is try to help them ascertain who has control. It's gonna be impossible for me, if, if I'm in that three mile district, to, uh, to do anything without offending somebody until they agree with who's got the authority.
If I might, Mr. Chair, I, I, obviously, uh, I'm not in the three mile and, and I know you aren't either, but a lot of our folks are, county folks are in the three mile. And, and they have to put up with both the city and the county. That needs to be fixed. Thank you.
May I comment on that?
Sure, Ron, go ahead.
So, so I'd ask all of you, what are we doing to, uh, resolve that conflict? I, you know, I would see that's part of what the county planning and zoning commission and, again, I'm not familiar with where I'm at in that or who my boss is, other than, I'm assuming the five of you. Uh, I would come forward and say, you know what, it's time we fix this.
Thank you, Ron.
Let's go to the state, let's go to the city, let's take care of it.
Duly noted, and we do have meetings with the city. And we decide to go quarterly, I don't know, to discuss items such as that. But I really appreciate you guys coming forward today. And unfortunately, we're gonna have to delay the decision till the next meeting, July third. We're gonna delay it. And I think what the commission needs to decide between now and then, review over the, the resumes and they may want to call and talk to you some more, for all three of you guys. And then what we need to decide as a, as a commission is, I'm thinking we do a paper ballot when it comes, comes back up in, on July third.
Chairman?
Ms., Ms. Hadcock.
Where's the third guy? Where's the third man?
He didn't make it. He couldn't make it. I'd have to ask, refer to John.
He's out of state. Okay.
Okay, so he's out of state.
Thank you.
Uh, Jim Coleman's out of state with the family, where, and see, that's why he is not here today.
May I make one more comment?
Sure.
I just learned yesterday about the July third. I had already, uh, planned a one-week trip to visit my youth in, in Minnesota. So, I won't be available to Ja- July third unless it's absolutely necessary. However, I am available by phone between now and then.
Well, I think Sandra, we've heard from Sandra and you both, so I think we're, we're good on that. Like, is it, the commission has any questions between now and then, they'll call you.
Okay.
They'll have your phone number and contact information, so. I, I appreciate your guys' interest and, and sorry about the delay. I thought, I'm sure you guys came here thinking there was gonna be a decision right away. And this is the new policy that we started with doing the interviewing and coming back in front of the commission and so forth. So, respectfully ask for your, your forgiveness for bringing you forward.
Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Appreciate you guys' coming forward. You guys did a really good job. As I said, this process during that interview, I was just, uh, a bystander in the, in the interviewing process and, uh, the people had some very good questions and all the applicants. One of the things that, the best thing that came out of this is the applicants had a lot of questions on how things were working, where to go. And I think that was very helpful to them in this process, so. With that, thank you for being here and we'll, we'll be in touch on, like, July third. With that, we'll move on to our next agenda.
Mr. Chair, while we're, while we're talking about this item, I got another concern.
Mr. Farabee?
I don't know that we've ever had, uh, a person that served six years come back. Uh, I could be wrong, but I don't think in my time I've ever seen anybody come back after six years.
Uh, Brent did it before.
We can check into that, but duly noted.
I don't, my personal feeling is that's not good policy.
Duly noted. As I said, we're, we'll be making the decision at the next meeting. We'll take the vote and it'll be by, we'll have to make the decision whether to go ballot verbal or what at that point in time. So, with that, thank you, guys. We're moving right along. Item fourteen is item from the sheriff. Items from the sheriff.
Good morning, Kevin Dome, Pennington County Sheriff. Have a request for FTEs before you today. And we'd originally written these into our two thousand and nineteen budget. I thought we'd talk about them tomorrow in our budget presentation, but discussion with Holly, thought it was best to bring them here, particularly in light of the fact that we need to go ahead and fill some of the positions in eighteen, even though they're accounted for in the, uh, nineteen budget request as well, so. And I sent you a, a memo with a couple of attachments. And, you know, five of the FTEs are related to a Department of Corrections grant. And they received, I think it was one point eight million dollar grant. And they targeted Pennington County for a couple of reasons. One, because the number of females going to the penitentiary and to the jail here disproportionately. So, it's focused on female population. And the other thing that people look to us to oftentimes, and both with the Department of Corrections grant and the MacArthur grant, so it's, it's kind of a good and bad thing, I guess, is that one, we have the ability to get things done in Pennington County and people appreciate that. And we have a strong collaborative and we work with the county commission. We work with the public defender, the state's attorney, our nonprofits, the, you know, Barry and his shop and the courts. We just get things done in Pennington County very successfully. So, when it comes to the MacArthur grant, Department of Corrections, if people are looking for partners to get things done, they oftentimes come to us, which is a compliment to Pennington County. And also, we have a need. We have more needs than we have resources, so we have outside resources that we can bring to the table. It saves the taxpayers of Pennington County money. And so just running through the FTEs, the, the five for the Department of Corrections are detox techs, which are basically people that, you know, work twenty-four, seven, three sixty-five in the facility. And they would stay, this program would stay up at the LaCrosse Street facility for now until it's, if it's approved to move forward at some point to finish the second floor and consolidate. We would consolidate those programs into the Kansas City Street facility. And then five of these are the MacArthur, uh, FTEs, which I gave you this as an attachment to your, uh, the memo I gave you. And some of these FTEs have been already approved. Not these today, but previously we had two approved. I think Barry had two approved for Health and Human Services. The, uh, and I think Vargo had one approved in the state's attorney's office. But today we're asking for, for the detox techs and one EMT that's been specified in the MacArthur, uh, grant. And just to rewind to the DOC grant a little bit, one of the questions that's often asked, and it's a fair question, is what happens with the FTEs when the grant money runs out? The DOC ones, the FTEs go away. But in the meantime, we get, you know, over a million dollars of services in Pennington County to help us offset our jail population and the impact on the state women's facility and peers. So, it's a win for Pennington County. Those FTEs would go away. The MacArthur grant, you know, we have two to two and a half years of funding. The ability to apply for additional grant money exists. Um, I don't know the answer for those FTEs at the end of the MacArthur grant. If we're able to absorb those or when you've come to the commission and asked for additional funding at some time or what happens? I don't have an answer at the end of, of that program. The goal always was to reduce the jail population so you could offset some of your costs there in repurposed dollars over towards the MacArthur initiatives in, in two, two and a half years. We have to make some hard decisions if that doesn't come to fruition. And then three of the FTEs are transfers from within our, we do this every year. And in our budget breakdown, we show you when we move FTEs from one division to the next. It's just us managing our FTEs. It's just a shifting of three FTEs over into city-county alcohol and drug. The funding for these are built into the nineteen budget, the MacArthur budget. The auditor has set that up as kind of its own entity, if you will. So, those are accounted for separately, not directly in our, our budget. And the, it's a neutral impact on tax support to Pennington County. So, it's all other funds. So, there's, we're not asking for tax support dollars at this point. But that's the background on it. Like I say, it's a, we have lots of needs in Pennington County. And fortunately, we have a strong collaborative here where we work well together. And people are willing, willing to invest in us. And frankly, it's a lot of extra work. I mean, the staff, myself, the other people, we take on the extra work. Um, and as we demonstrated in when Casey Peterson did that pro forma on the different parts of our operation, you know, it clearly offsets costs for Pennington County taxpayers to do these things. Our life would be simpler if we didn't, but it would complicate our jail numbers, our detox numbers. So, just because we don't do it, doesn't mean the problem magically goes away. The problem still exists. Just a question of how you address it and deal with it. So, certainly stand for any questions, but ask for your support in the request today.
Thank you, Kevin. Thank you, Kevin. Is there any questions?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. DeSanto.
Kevin, first of all, I'd like to apologize for not calling you back. Had a very busy weekend.
That's fine.
Um, when we shipped the, these FTEs, you were talking about shifting FTEs. I'm, I'm assuming we shift them from one place to another, but then we replace them with new FTEs?
Are you referring to the three FTEs?
Right. You, you were talking about shifting three FTEs.
We took them.
That are already on the payroll and we're moving them just somewhere else and not replacing them or?
Correct. Yeah, just shifting them to a different, uh, different division within the sheriff's office.
Is that the three FTEs that we're adding from increased revenues? Or are these being just shifted from another department that we're? My, my question is, is you're asking for, for approval of ten new FTEs, correct? Or are three of them already employed, being paid on the payroll?
I'll clarify, 'cause I probably have confused this. So, ten FTEs, but in addition to the ten, we're moving three from law enforcement to jail over to city-county for a total of thirteen. But the three are already on the books. And the funding isn't moving with those. They're being funded by other revenues over at city-county. So, that's accounted for.
Okay.
I apologize for the confusion.
No, that clarifies. I see the last sentence there, but I just wanted to, um, to clarify that. And I, I'm, in the past, from what I've seen, and I wasn't around when, when the restoration center was approved. And I don't know what was said back then as far as how many new employees we were gonna have to have to, to operate that facility. But it just seems that we just continue to grow and grow and grow. And I understand that we can fund this with increased revenues from, I'm assuming, the federal prisoner program. Is that where those revenues are coming from?
The Department of Corrections grant is through Bureau of Justice and Assistance. It's federal dollars.
Okay. But federal dollars are also taxpayer dollars as well. And I, and I have a difficult time understanding how, if we need these five FTEs that are coming from the corrections grant and these five FTEs that are coming from the MacArthur grant to operate this facility, and those disappear. Now, you said that you could possibly come back for, to the commission for, uh, for the five from the MacArthur grant. But you said the ones from, from the corrections grant are, they're going away. But I, I, in city and county government, I just, I've never seen that. I, I've never witnessed where we hire some people and then the time comes that the funding runs out for them from somebody else. And then we're not turned around and asked, and I'm not, I may not be here when that happens. But my, looking into the future in my crystal ball, that doesn't happen. We're gonna wind up paying for these guys eventually. That's the way I see it.
Mr. Chairman, if I may. And again, I think it's a fair question, because it does happen in government. But I, I put it in writing, so in two years or three years, whenever it comes up, you can dig this memo out and beat me back over the head with it at the time. And, and say that, you know, you put it in writing that you weren't gonna ask for the, the funding for the five FTEs. And I don't intend to, but in the meantime, I think we should take advantage of the additional services we can get for Rapid City, Pennington County. You know, the big driver to this is substance abuse. If you look at the memo that was attached, the, on there, from DOC, ninety-two percent of these people have a severe substance abuse disorder. And frankly, methamphetamine is kicking our tail on many fronts right now. And I'm gonna talk about that more tomorrow in our budget meeting. And it's impacting everything we do, from the public defender, the state's attorney, law enforcement, the jail, the courts. It has a ripple effect through everything. So, I think we should take advantage of the opportunity to try and impact it any way we can. I think we've dropped the ball when it comes to prevention and treatment. We're arresting them in record numbers, so that's not a problem. But when it comes to treatment and prevention, I think we've dropped the ball and not put the resources into it that we need to. And now we're paying the price for it.
I'd like to take a moment of privilege and just kind of explain, Mark, some of the stuff that I've seen on this grant type stuff. From, from detox, I've seen hiring of counselors and so forth. And they, they know from the very beginning, it's a grant-funded position. And if it goes away, the job goes away. I understand what, like, with this, we do this with the, and actually, Rapid City has been highlighted and it trained with the JDAI program with our juvenile service center. And, and this is a mere project of how they reduce their numbers and it's going up to the adult steps now. The way I look at those five employees, when that grant runs, we've got five trained people who've worked with, in, within the deal. If there's other openings, they can apply for other openings or move forward. So, it's actually saving training dollars that way, too, if it gets to that point. But that, that's probably where I stand with that, as far as, they understand that they're gone, they're gone. But you got two years and we have turnover rates in our systems and we can move people around if they apply for them. But you're right. I mean, some of the positions you see that, that they're asking for, you know, I mean, the community service specialist, jail release coordinator and the pre-trial specialist, these are all programs from, that it's pretty much mirroring the JDAI program. And it, and it's working and they're working towards that, too. If I'm, correct, Kevin?
The, the MacArthur initiatives are, you know, just getting underway. Um, you know, some of them are, I don't say fully implemented, but are taken off. Some of them are waiting for the expansion, we call safe solutions or safe beds, once the facility's done. That's what these FTEs do, is allow us to increase capacity over there. And frankly, it's a, in part, a jail diversion.
Do you have more follow-up?
Chairman?
Ms. Haggard?
I guess I'm just looking at the budgets. Did you, is this included in the new budgets, Kevin?
That's correct. It should, it should be incorporated in there. Now, the MacArthur's funding is, you know, for the auditor's orders is, you know, separate entities. So, that's not accounted for with the other FTEs are in there.
Because if you look at Health and Human Services, it's like dropped about a hundred thousand this year. And then in CCAPDPC, CCADP, it's up eleven point nine two, but everything else is pretty much average. So, that's why I said, if you included it on there, then you're, the only one I'm seeing that actually raised higher was the CCADP or D, I can't even say the word, CCADP.
City-county.
Yes. But that is the area where actually we get funding from, from people that are in the services. Am I correct?
Correct. In the city-county, we get, you know, treatment dollars, if you will, through the state and federal government for services we provide. And that's why we always, our goal is keep it tax-neutral to, on these increases to Pennington County. But in the meantime, take advantage of the services.
So, again, the thirteen FTEs, what's actually coming out of these budgets? Cause they're, ten are grants, am I correct? And then three are new?
Yeah, other way around. Three are existing FTEs that will move from other budgets. And ten are the new request.
And they're in these budgets that I have in my budget book?
Correct. I don't know, let me clarify. I don't know what's in your budget book. I assume the MacArthur stuff is in there, 'cause MacArthur is, you know, kind of looked at separately, is how the auditor set it up. So, it's, it's a separate fund that, you know, they supplement back into our budgets from there. But I don't know what your budget book has.
So, Mr. Dome, is that, if, if it's okay, I would like, like, when we come on, this week, we're doing budget. If, and hopefully, we don't have to approve this today and then you can explain it more, where you put it in on here. Because I think, um, people are talking about your funding in different things. But if they look at their budget books, you're actually, and those areas are, are decreasing in some areas. And the only one I see is one increase is through the, again, the drug and alcohol. So, um, what I'm saying is, I think it'd be easier if we went through this during budget time and, and hopefully, we didn't have to approve it today. Is there issue with that, sir?
Kevin?
And here's our timing issue. If you want to approve these and move these programs forward, we need to start hiring in July and August, 'cause the facility's gonna open in September. So, that's a timeline warp again. So, whether you approve it today or approve it tomorrow, that's when Holly and I had the discussion. I was under the impression that it would need to be approved today. If you can approve FTEs at the budget hearing tomorrow, I'm, I'm fine with that, too, if you decide to.
Sir, I'd just like to go through that with you just a little bit. And I'm sorry also, I've been, or you already know, lots of things going on. And even today, I could meet with you or tomorrow before then. Um, I would appreciate that, because I, to me, I think from the explanation of Mark or others in respect of that, um, I think you can show your numbers are actually pretty good for what you're asking for.
Whatever the commission's desires is, if you wanna, you know, move it on till the tomorrow during the budget process. But I'd certainly like to stand for any other questions. So, if there are other unanswered questions, we can bring that information to the budget meeting.
Are you done?
Yes, sir.
I presume all, before you've seen this memo that the sheriff signed, says, "We are asking you to approve our request to hire ten FTEs in July and August." And, and that's, that's like next month, preparation for the September open. Did you know about this a year ago? We bought that building a couple of years ago. So, it was a September, in fact, was a, a spring opening of 2018. This is by on, by and beyond belief. You think we're that stupid?
That, that's uncalled for. That's enough to talk like that. I mean it. Don't even respond to that.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Buskert?
You know, my problem is, how, how does this compare or differ than what they're gonna open across the street? How, how do they, do they mesh? Are we doing the same things?
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Go ahead.
Are you referring to the effort by Rapid City Collective Impact, what's been referred to as One Heart or Transformation Center?
Yeah.
Yeah. They're, they're two different parts of the process, if you will. You oftentimes heard a discussion about restoration, which was what our building was oftentimes referred to as. And then transformation, which has now been named One Heart. And if that becomes a facility that's finally selected. So, you have restoration, transformation. The idea of restoration is kind of the street level, people in crisis. And so, that's like detox, safe beds, the treatment side. And then get people at least fixed, if you will, and headed in the right direction. Then veil them to the services over in the transformation center side to continue through the process and hopefully out of the system. So, start them here, hopefully fix them here, get them out of the system. That's an oversimplified description, but that's in essence. If you look at what Haven for Hope in San Antonio has done, and frankly, they're probably the best model. I think that's a, again, oversimplified description, but that's what it does. So, they do serve two different functions, but there is a synergy that exists between the two different programs or campuses, whatever you wanna call it.
I have to, I have to agree with Mark then. You know, we're gonna get thirteen new people, ten of them in two, two and a half years. You never know, the commission may, everybody will say no. And then what are we gonna do? Throw everybody out of there? It's, you know, if we don't have any money and we're gonna get rid of ten people.
Mr. Chairman, if I may. Absolutely. When it comes to the FTEs, you know, oftentimes, we can do things through attrition. But at the end of the day, we need to, you know, let some employees go. That's a, a risk that we take. Generally, we can do it through attrition. And in terms of services, if you have less employees, it's less services. So, we just, at that time, do less services. But I think in the meantime, wanna take advantage of, you know, whether it's the MacArthur dollars or the DOC grant, take advantage of the additional services for our community. And, you know, it's a contradiction for me. I'm standing here asking you for more work. And I really don't need any more work. But I think it's good for our community and I think it, I think it helps overall with what we're trying to do with our system. Because everything impacts, like I said earlier, from the courts to public defender, state's attorney, law enforcement. It impacts our entire system. So, I, I think it's prudent to take advantage of the dollars. And hopefully, we can have an impact on what's going on in our community.
You said that forty-one percent of the, of the people that we may be working on have a history of mental health. Um, I guess, I believe the mental health issue is a state problem, not ours. I, 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 I guess, probably ringing hard nose, I'm against this whole process. We gotta hire thirteen people to do things that I guess is not the county's responsibility.
Mr. Chair.
I, I'd like to speak. I'd let everybody else speak. I, you know, I support this. And if, if you look at, you know, five, ten of the employees are grant-funded. And as we said, they're gonna go away if they don't produce. Hopefully, they're gonna produce what we expect them to do. You know, one of the biggest things that we got on here is two case managers. And that's absolutely what these people need in our community, to follow up on them, to make sure they're taking their meds, to see what's going on, that type of thing. That's how we prevent people from coming back and back and back and back, is, is the follow-up. We've seen some proven efforts and, and numbers of, of that. I understand every time you bring up FTEs, that it sparks, we're growing, we're having numbers. But these ones can produce cost savings from one side to the other. I've, I've seen the numbers where they follow people and it costs us taxpayers thirty-five to forty thousand dollars per, per person for, for fire department, ambulance, emergency room, and they're still living on the street. Thirty-five thousand dollars, thirty-five to forty. You know, we're talking one person that was, we have the case studies, we can show that. So, I understand you guys' concerns, but in the long run, we're looking at not only saving the taxpayers money, but we're also getting, get people to hopefully be functional on their own. I mean, if you look at these numbers, quite frankly, folks, substance, substance abuse disorders, ninety-two percent. These are people who were born with fetal abuse disorders, ninety-two percent, these are people who were born with fetal alcohol syndrome or some type of problem that, that it's been created. And we are stuck with dealing with that. And that's what we have to do, unless we want to take them five miles out of town to drop off and make them walk back. Like, I mean, that's just not what we do. I mean, that's some of the concepts. This is something I'm passionate about. I think we need to really do the prevention and, and step up to do this if we want the long run results. There is none, there is no quick fix to where we're going to save money within one year. It happens in generations. If we start now, we can prevent the next generation from being in this situation. And, and that's where I'm at with this. So, you know, we can argue about this, and I hate to see us throw away the five, you know, the grants, deny that, just because.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, if I may make one comment, and then I guess, if you want to continue this till tomorrow to the budget hearing, I'll bring back whatever additional information. But frankly, I agree with Commissioner Buschard, in that it's frustrating that the county has these things thrust on them. But you all get the advantage of saying no. I don't get to say no. Me, the chief of police, so when the business calls, a citizen calls, we deal with it every day on the street. So I don't get to say no, I'm sorry, we're full, we're busy, you know, we're not interested, whatever the reason might be, a hospital, other service providers. Everybody gets to say no, except law enforcement. So that's why I come to you with this, again, asking, put extra work on myself and the staff. I don't get any extra benefit out of it, other than it provides the services to our community. So it helps us out at the street level. I think it helps our community out, and I'll certainly bring the information back for the budget hearing tomorrow.
Mr., it looks like Mr. Vargo would like to speak. Go ahead.
Mark Vargo, Pennington County State's Attorney. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I wanted to chime in on much the same point, because I absolutely agree with Commissioner Buschard, that this is a problem that the state is dumping on us. We do not have the mental health resources that we need in this state, and we're now at a point where when somebody needs competency evaluation, I want to send them to Yankton, we're looking at four to six months down the road before they can accomplish it. And that's because it's understaffed, they've got the FTEs, and they can't find the people to work it. So the bottom line is, we deal with those people here, but the problem is, we're in a very dangerous game of chicken. The state can say, well, that's all we're going to fund it for. We're not going to raise our salaries, we're not going to provide additional services. Those people are just not going to come to state facilities. Well, they do come to the sheriff's jail, they do come to my courtrooms, and we end up dealing with them, and that great cost to our citizens, who have to deal with them on the street. And so I absolutely get your point, Ron, but I, I don't want to play that game of chicken with the state. The feds are very good at dumping things on the states, and the states are very good at dumping things on the county, and I don't think I've ever met a county commissioner that had an idea about how to reverse that flow, even ones who have friends in the state house.
Mr. Chairman, I, I, and I, I see your point, but, you know, we went to some, some fine intended people in Pennington County, went to the legislature and said, "We need a West River mental health facility." And by us funding one, you think they're going to say, oh, yeah? No, you see, I think we're, we're at cross purposes by, by funding one, when we're asking them to fund one. But-
Waiting, but letting the crisis emerge so that they'll be motivated to fund one, assuming that that would ever happen, I don't know that anybody in Pennington County wants to live through the process that it would take to make sure that that happened. So-
Mr. Chairman, if I may, just, I want to clarify one thing, and the, the memo included, or the attachment of my memo, about forty-one percent of the history of mental health issues, you know, this was a partnership with Department of Corrections, Lutheran Social Services, and Law Enforcement. Lutheran Social Services will provide the counseling piece, mental health, substance abuse side. To Commissioner Buschard's question about a mental health facility, we actually have a lot of things going on right now that are moving us down the road towards trying to solve that in terms of mental health. I don't think another state-run facility out here is the answer. I think we don't need more government, we need less government, but government should be a stakeholder in it. So we're looking at trying to do a public-private partnership on mental health, and actually have some things in the works I can't talk about yet that we're going to bring forward to the commission in terms of trying to move that ball forward. And I think there's some opportunity where the cities, the counties, the tribes, the federal government, the state, everybody needs to be at the table. It shouldn't just rest on any one entity, because it's not any one person's problem.
But, you, you, Mr. Chairman, and I, and I agree, and I don't want to raise a sour point, but you also say sixty-five percent are Native American. How much money is IHS putting in this? I know the answer.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, if I may, I mean, there's no Indian Health Service dollars into this, but again, in terms of mental health, long-term solutions, I think the tribes and the federal government need to be part of that discussion, because we do have disproportionate Native American impact in our, our facilities when it comes to substance abuse and the jail, and that's really what's driving part of our MacArthur initiative as well.
Mr. Chair.
Okay. Mr. DeSanto. I agree with Ron on every point he's made. I know you guys do, too. I know that four months ago, we voted, I believe, on a resolution to, to get a mental health facility over here, West River. I don't know where that's going to go. Lynn hasn't talked much about it, but I think that it's something that is, has, is giving, it's getting thought, and it could get traction. It would be, I would lean more towards, possibly, approving the, the FTEs from the Department of Corrections grant, approving the FTEs from the MacArthur grant, and telling, and asking you to take the increased revenues for their three FTEs and put them in a savings account, so that when we lose those other guys, we've got money sitting in savings to make up the difference, because those guys, I, I just, I just cannot see them going away. I, I don't see, I don't see how that works. It doesn't jive in my calculations. But again, I, I just feel like we are, are, we just continue to take on more and more and more, and you're admitting it. We're taking on more and more and more, it's getting thrust upon us, and if we just continue to, to allow it to happen, then as Ron said, there's no incentive for the state to do a thing. They're, well, they're going to take it off our hands anyway, because they're going to feel desperate, and they're going to, you know, that's just the way it seems to me.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, you know, the, the state's a partner in this one grant. You know, the Department of Corrections is at the, at the table with us, and they're, they're a partner with this grant, along with Lutheran Social Services. So I, I don't feel like the state's abandoning us in that. And I, I do agree, things get thrust on us at local level, but again, like I said earlier, the chief and I don't get to say no. So when you're frustrated in the community because of meth, or mental health, or jail numbers, whatever it might be, we don't get to say no. We just have to go deal with the problem. And so that's why I bring these things forward. I, I think it's a good business in terms of taking advantage of the resources while they're available. Hopefully, they have an impact. The option of doing nothing just doesn't work for me. That's just not my style.
Okay, I think, you, you done with your, Ms. Haggard?
Couple points. To allow this to happen, I don't think any, the, the chief, or, or the sheriff, or anybody in this county wants and, and lets things allowed to happen. I think what happens, and I was on SB seventy-three, is that they have nine million dollars, and they give us in juvenile servitorses from the state, one hundred and thirty-one thousand. So no one's allowing this to happen. If that was the point, then we should have got most of the money, because most of those diversion programs have been working in Pennington County and been doing some amazing things for people in our county. But, you know, we need help through the state, and we're not getting it. So we get it thrust upon us, if that's the word you want to use, and these guys have to take care of the issue. If you don't let them take care of the issue, what comes back is to us. We're not doing enough in mental health, we're not doing enough with meth, we're not doing enough for prosecuting, we're not doing enough for this, we're not doing enough for that, and these guys get to hear it, not us. Mostly them. Number two, going away, those, those FTEs might be going away, but I don't think they should. What's happened in the city was in their, what, six, seven years? You absorb them, because he's going to lose people in the sheriff's department, and we just had two and a half years of training from a grant, that we, he could absorb somebody that has the, the training, instead of go hire somebody else. That's what we did with some of those grants people, in fact, most of them. We didn't, sometimes you absorb people that you thought were, you know, well above where we needed in certain areas, but most of the time, we absorbed them, because we're always switching in the sheriff's department, we're always switching in different departments here, because of turnover, because what they see, or what they do, or what they're having. So it's not like those ten are, are just going to go away. I would hope they wouldn't. And some people, like, uh, behavior management has sucked some of those people up, because they're trained. They were trained in Rapid City. You're also getting people from those grants that are getting trained that might stay here. So you can look at it as negative, but I've seen the other side of it as well. So those people are getting trained to do a job, so they don't have to go away. They don't have to actually come to us, maybe, but I would hope the sheriff and, and Mr. Vargo would put those in their departments, the people that are leaving and, and have that, that training. I've seen it, it works really good, and it saves not only him money, Mr., or Mr. Tom money, for the future, because they've been trained, and they're going in there with two and a half years of training that a grant paid for. So there's two sides to that story when you're doing things, and you need to go look into that, and how many people they have absorbed with other people leaving. So that also can happen. So we don't always have to say that he's going to, it always happens that we have to take those people, because we feel bad they're losing jobs. My point, let's look at this tomorrow, see what the numbers are, and that's where I would go, and then see what's next. And again, I'd like to meet with the sheriff to see what those numbers, because I did bring my budget book and looked at it, and I didn't see the numbers increasing a lot in those areas. So maybe we could be a little bit more compromising and, and see what the, the numbers are, and see where we're going with the budgets.
My question, yeah, there's, this is on the agenda today. Tomorrow, we're talking about, we could move it to tomorrow and approve it tomorrow. Is that possible?
No.
I, I, that's what I'm thinking.
We can hear it, but we can't approve.
I'm going to throw this out for discussion. I'm going to throw out a motion to approve the ten FTEs underneath MacArthur grant, because we've got the funding for it, we've got the funding for the Corrections grant. I mean, that money's there. I would say the other FTEs, because we're looking at this cost savings is going to make that money, but I'm going to throw that motion out there to approve the ten FTEs, see if I get a second so we can have a discussion.
For discussion.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, one other comment, and then I'm going to shut up and let you vote, but the, when Casey Peterson come in and did the pro forma, just three parts of our operation, it showed the benefit of the things we do in terms of taking on these additional services. And in that case, it generated, you know, a seven million dollar savings. What, what Casey Peterson said in their pro forma was, "I could cut my work by a third, but I'd need seven million more dollars from the commission to do that job." So that doesn't make any sense. And we're trying to do the same thing here. We're trying to approach these things with a business model, where we have a neutral impact on the taxpayer. Yes, we're taking on extra work, but neutral impact on the taxpayer, take advantage of the services. And, you know, like I said, five of these FTEs go away, the other ones, you know, a future commission or myself are going to have to deal with, and that, that's just part of what we do, is part of what I do, is part of what you do. We make decisions like that. So I would ask for your support, and certainly, whatever the commission wants to do.
Thank you, Kevin. I threw that out there, and we got a motion, and we got a second to do the FTEs. Now I can speak on why I threw it out there. I think we're focusing a lot on the mental health, which is a big part of it. You know, that's why we, you know, the Crisis Care Center was, was a multi-facet combination of people coming together to have that created and started before we, before Rapid City Regional backed down what they were doing. That was in the works, because people needed a temporary, need to see somebody right away, and, and weren't getting the follow-up. You know, throughout this process, you know, even if you look back through the numbers, the next agenda item is, is the treatment center. If we take that treatment center and move it over across the street, the cost savings that we are going to experience are more than enough to cover these FTEs. We're going to be saving now the maintenance and, and utilities and so forth, and we're going to have inventory of a building, and we've, we've got some plans that we could work on to collaborate that. It's not very often that I look to my commissioners and ask their support on something, but when I do, it, it comes from my heart, and I'm, I'm asking for the support from the commission on this, if they, if they would please. Is there any further discussion?
I have one, Mr. Chairman.
Ron.
When we, which we probably will, open this place, are, are we going to have charges that we can put liens on, or charge other counties for their residents that are, where we're housing here and paying for?
I can answer one part of that, just from experience. The Crisis Care Center, they take insurance and they do bill, that I do know. Go ahead.
Chairman, if I may, yes, still the above. I think we should try and get dollars anywhere we can. I don't think we should just roll over and make it our problem. We, and I think, you know, frankly, Sheriff Holloway put a good business model in place for the sheriff's office. We've continued it, where we try and find funding for the things, the services we're providing. We don't try and do it for free for other counties. So absolutely, I would advocate that nobody else gets a free ride, if at all possible, that we bill for everything we can.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. DeSanto.
I'm going to make a substitute motion. I make a substitute motion that we continue this until the July third meeting, to give it some more thought. Sounds to me like we've got people on the fence. I know that we're always under a time crunch, always, and, but right now, right now, here and today, I will vote no on this. And, but there's a possibility that if I give it some thought over the next couple of weeks, and talk to Sheriff Tom some more, and talk to Mark Vargo, that, 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 that thought process could change. But I'm, that would be my motion.
You, I think you said July third, the next meeting.
Correct.
I'll say that.
It's been a substitute motion to continue to the July third commissioning. So Mark can talk with Mr. Vargo and Kevin. That was part of the discussion. Kevin, is that going to affect anything? That's what I'd like to know.
We'll, we'll certainly make that work, and I'll do any follow-up meetings that are necessary, and engage Mark in those discussions with Commissioner DeSanto, if he also wants additional information.
Okay. Any further discussion on the continuation motion?
Since I didn't get a chance to talk about the main motion, I hope you give me a liberty to say a few words. We, we're losing focus.
Your mic, please.
About three years ago, we voted to buy the building over here, and, and I regret not joining Commissioner Buschard and voting no. For three years, we've, we've known that at some point in time, we're going to have to man the place. Three years. We had a budget, a cycle every year, budget hearings, but here we are, asked next month to start hiring. It's like it's a big surprise. Where's the planning? Why didn't we plan for this thing? I regret voting three years ago. I should have joined Commissioner Buschard. Thank you.
One comment I will make is, things changed in three years. We didn't have the MacArthur grant, we didn't have a lot of that stuff either, so things did change. Motion on the floor is for continuation to the July third meeting. Any further discussion? Anything in the public? Seeing none, all, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? George, yea or nay?
Aye.
Okay. He said aye. Next, that brings us to item fifteen, county help.
You're probably tired of me by now, but the, the, Mike Cool and I are going to present this again. The, it was up a few months ago. Really, we're just trying to do a reset on it. All we're asking for today is permission to go engage with an architect, to bring a contract to the commission for consideration. And this centers around the donation to finish off the second floor- And we discussed that, you know, at length, you know, the previous meeting, why that's important. And the consolidation of the two facilities into one and the money it saves. And I think we illustrated in there, it was over the next five years, it was about a, I don't remember my numbers off top. May had about a half million dollar impact over four or five years to not consolidate. Plus it would save 3.5 FTE by consolidating. So that would erase part of what we're talking about in the previous item by consolidating. But all we're asking for today, I don't know if we're gonna plow that whole field again today or wait till we bring back a contract and see what the costs are. And this would be non-tax dollars. It would be if you approved the contract at the next meeting, it would be out of the donated dollars. Just seeking permission to go talk to a contract, architect to bring a contract back for discussion. Is that correct, Mike, today?
That, that is correct.
Ms. Aggar.
Um, Sheriff Tom, so, um, the contract would be paid for out of those dollars. And then, um, do you believe, Mike and Kevin, that, um, it's 1.5 rate, if I recall?
Correct.
That the second floor can be, with that contract's gonna be under that budget?
If I can answer, Mr. Chairman.
That's good.
I think Mike would tell you today that he thinks it's probably higher than that. But until we engage the architect and get a little further into the process to refine that, it's hard to come back with a firm number. I can tell you that the person that donated the original money has said that if we need additional dollars to finish the space, that they'd be willing to provide those as well.
That, that's what I needed here. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. DeSanto.
I would also like to ask you guys to, we, we've talked about moving this facility. We've never talked about getting an appraisal on that building. And I'd like to know what kind of revenue that the sale of the Lacrosse Street building is gonna bring to the county to contribute to the Restoration Center across the, the street.
Mike.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I want to mention one thing here, Mike. The, Mike can talk about the process we've used to kind of establish a value on the, uh, Lacrosse Street facility. We sell it. I would advocate the county, when they sell that, put the money in reserves and don't spend it on the building across the street. Keep that money in the bank, put that money back in the tax rolls and sell it, you know, to, or an interested buyer. Mike can talk about valuations.
We, uh, we did have the, uh, uh, building appraised, uh, when we were originally considering the purchase of the, uh, the old NAU building. I, our, our, kind of our planning at the, uh, up to this time is that we have an expectation that, uh, you know, we could get one to one and a half million dollars for, for the building, perhaps. But, um, you know, we would have to go back through, we have to have it reappraised based on the current market.
Mr. Chair. So Mike, more than likely, real estate's been increasing. So the higher number would probably be the more realistic number unless we've done uh, damage to the facility or something like that. Am I, am I correct?
Uh, uh, I, I would, yes, you would, you would think that that would follow true. But I, I, I do not do appraisals and I do not know what the market for that type of facility is right now. So.
Okay. Well, I appreciate the estimate. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman. I remember it was always two million when we were first talking about it, but I guess it's now down, down to half. How much is this gonna cost us to develop a professional service contract with them roughly? Any idea?
Uh, I, I think we're, we're probably in a hundred and, uh, thirty to a hundred and forty thousand dollar range.
Here's my question. If we turn down the ten employees, do we need this thing built?
It's a little bit of apples and oranges. I mean, you can turn down the employees, but we still keep Lacrosse Street open unless you wanna go ahead and shutter that completely and get out of the business, the, the additional ten employees. That facility will be open, Lacrosse Street will be open, just operating at lower capacities.
Okay. I'll make a motion. Ready for one? To authorize Mike Cool, Construction Project Manager, to develop a professional service contract with Upper Death Architects, Inc. for the design and construction of Phase Two residential treatment area on the second floor of the county health facility to be brought back to the Board for Authorization, period.
Second.
And not to include to begin implementing changes to the current construction project in preparation for it.
That's what you seconded.
Is that what we were doing? Sorry, I wasn't listening to the last.
The, the changes, there, there were changes implemented. You guys approved those at the, at the previous meeting.
Thank you.
To make some infrastructure changes to the facility.
Okay. So there's been a motion and a second discussion?
Mr. Chair, this was before, six months ago, January 10th. We were snuckered then, we're snuckered again. It's my understanding that architect work was done for the entire building. Whether we did the construction right away or not, the architect was supposed to have been done in its entirety. So here again, we're foot in the door, buy-in, whatever towards you wanna use. Obviously, I'm gonna be voting, be voting no.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, any from the public? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed?
Aye, yes.
So we got two noes from Mr. DeSanto and Mr. Farabee. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Item sixteen, items from the Highway Department, Tom Wilson.
Good morning, Commissioners. Tom Wilson, Pankton County Highway Superintendent. This item is a carryover item from last meeting. We were discussing the, uh, what extent we're going to construct, reconstruct on Sheridan Lake Road project. Uh, you requested what other projects I have planned for the next five years. I have included with this, um, the five-year projection for projects which could be affected. Um, in addition to those five-year plans, I have two large projects. One of them is the Bombing Range Road, which is south of Scenic, 7.2 miles. And Nemo Road is a project that was identified seven years ago. Is a project that should be considered due to the large number of trucks and vehicles that use this road. These two projects I do not have funding for. This is what we would have to be identified, would have to be identified for those two. Um, also attached to this budget was the letter for the June 7th meeting. Same request for action is being asked. I need to know this so that I can get the contractor, no, consultant going on the set of plans. The final set, so we can also start right away acquisition. I entertain any and all questions.
Thank you, Tom. I think from my memory from the last meeting, some of the discussion was to have you bring back some of the ones that would be affected, which you've done. But the, it seemed like the blunt of the discussion was on the reserves.
Yes.
And so I'd look at the, you were looking at using seven million and leaving seven million in reserves and there's discussion that maybe you should take more.
What I have showed here in this, in this chart, and what I have shown you is there, I had other plans for some more uses of the reserve, which include the, uh, South Rockford, that was set up that way by Heine. I also have, uh, curve correction for a simple, for up on Nemo Road and reconstruct intersection 1416 and Gumbo Road in Box Elder, which Gumbo Road is also, um, is also Radar Hill Road.
So. So for clarification, you would add those two because that's what you want in reserves?
It was originally planned to use reserve for these projects, yes.
With what you, okay. That's, that's what I wanna know. Ms., Ms. Aggar.
So the 5.5, we already had of federal money, right?
That is correct. Coming next year, I will.
And then seven million on your reserves.
Yes.
And then eight would be the SIB funds.
Pardon, the what?
Aren't they called, are they STIP or SIB Fund Advance?
That is the 5.5.
I thought the 5.5.
The SIB is the loan from, from the state against our SIB, yeah, against the future funds.
Which the future funds are the eight million, not the 5.5.
Not the 5.5. The 5.5 are what we have now.
That's what I'm saying. So we have 5.5 from that STIP or whatever you wanna call it. We'd have to get that advance of eight million from.
It would, it would not have, maybe have to be the full eight million. We could cut it back and do some more.
Well, I, I'm saying at the most, we'd need eight million if that's, we're guessing twenty, twenty million or 21 million and then seven million from our reserves. Is that what you wanted to do in the first place?
That is what I would, that is what I'm proposing, yes.
To me, that makes the most sense. And I, I wouldn't take all the seven million in reserves because those other areas are, are affecting my district and other people's district that I think need to get done. So, um, I guess if I would go anywhere, that would be my motion. It makes the most sense. We're doing all of Sheridan Lake Road. It's a road that we've been needing a long time. My constituents aren't in that district, but I've heard from them as well. And they think that, um, that is something that needs to move forward. I mean, we all enjoy that road going to different lakes and different areas, so it affects us all. So.
I would like to point out one, I, one thing about this, the SIB loan funds.
Yes.
These are dollars that we don't see now. We have not seen them to date. This is just a savings account that we used to use with the STP funds.
And it's zero.
My budget has not seen this. So to say it's gonna affect my budget, it would re-effect it if I'm getting the money because my budget would go up. That's the way it would affect me. By borrowing it, we're not affecting my current budget because we're just extending how long before I get, start getting that money.
And it's zero percent interest.
Zero, yeah, zero percent interest. Is there any further discussion from the board?
Yes.
Mr. Ron Buskerd.
What, you know, I, I guess, I, I must have lost it. But you had Sheridan Lake Road divided into what, three sections?
Actually, four.
Four. What, uh, do you remember what the costs of those four are?
Just a second, sir. First section was about, um, eight and a half million.
Is that first section from town going out?
No, that's the section from 385 coming in.
Eight and a half?
Yes. The second section was an overlay and it's only about, I'm sorry, I'm doing this from memory. I, let me make sure I don't have that here.
Does Mark have it?
Mark, do you happen to have it? You didn't bring it either. Okay. I apologize. I had forgotten. I thought I had it with me. The second section is an overlay. It's about half a million or above, a little above. Third section is a reconstruction section and it is, as I remember, four and a half to five. And the last section is rural, is a urban section. And it would be the balance of it, about, as I remember, about six, oh, my math is doing real bad right now. I'm sorry.
I, I really hate to see us take ten years worth of money. I would, my trace would be that we do the first, not the first section, the fourth section, the one from Rapid City going out. That needs to, that's got the most people, the most traffic, probably needs to be done the, the most. And I could easily see doing the first and maybe the second. That would take 11 million. That would, that would, um, leave him three million in his reserve. And, 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 uh, I said it before and, and, um, I mean, tell, tell your people that, uh, when they want something done in your district, information.
Stop it.
Uh, they, why don't you, why don't you go back and check and see how they voted on the wheel tax? And then you can, they probably don't have a right to complain.
One thing I would like to point out on this construction. We figure the construction, in the construction industry, it's gonna go up to, and a half to three percent every year. The longer we delay, the more it costs. And that, that's where I get a little nervous. If we delay this six, eight years, we're increasing the cost.
Maybe.
Tremendously.
And if the state lets a bunch of projects in this area, it could go, or, or don't let any, it could go down. I've been in the construction business too.
I have yet to see it go down much.
You make a motion?
I, I know I have not. I just hate to see, you know, I hate to see us do this ten, ten years worth. And there's going to be projects that come up in ten years that are much more important than, I don't know.
I'll make a comment.
Mr. Chair, before we get to motion, make, I get a turn?
I was just gonna make a comment.
Oh, go ahead.
If you'd like to speak first, age before beauty.
You're, 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 you made a determination there that's not supportable. You got more mundane matter on your memory. Talk about Nemo Road, having a lot of truck traffic.
Yes.
Do, do those folks have any kind of holodeckement with us?
No, they do not.
Believe me, there is a bunch of truck traffic.
Yes, there is.
Where, where's it coming from and where's it going to? Wh- where is it coming from and where's it going to?
A lot of it goes to the, uh, the cement plant and it's coming from somewhere in Lawrence County. The way I understand.
Unbelievable, the amount of traffic I, it's, it's, you know.
I agree with you. It's a, it's amazing how much traffic, that, truck traffic that comes down that road.
We should perhaps think about load limits.
Well, all, all the above, yeah. And, um, it's a county road. And I'm not done. Sheridan Lake Road, I, I still think that we should push state really, really hard to take over that tourist road, Sheridan Lake Road. Should be a state road. Rockford Road. Anybody look at, uh, this chart that's attached to the memo? Halfway down, the South Rockford Road from Rockford South to the end of Deerfield Road asphalt. Length nine point five, as I recall, it's 10.5, but estimated cost 12 million.
That's what, I, that is actually what Heine had for it. And I have not changed it because I don't, have not seen plans for it. We have adjusted from there because that is for asphalt. I'm looking at a blotter surface, which will save us money. I'm hoping that that three million is incorrect.
With the experience we just had with Sheridan Lake Road, not 10%, not 20%, 110%. Do you really think your estimate for South Rockford Road is accurate?
I think it's a lot closer, yes.
Okay.
We are doing several things to try to cut the cost on Rockford and we have.
Also on this chart, let's see.
You know, does this pertain to Sheridan Lake Road?
It's, it's all part of the package and we're talking about, I recall last time Commissioner DeSanto asked about these other projects and the Bombing Range project. Uh, let's see, where was that? You also talked about, uh,
Nemo Road and Sher, and Bombing Range, yes.
And, and then Highway of Box Elder, 1416 to exit 63 east to the end of the divided section east of Ellsworth Road. Uh, 2.70 miles, three, almost three and a half million. Is, is up.
Part of all that in Box Elder? Why are we doing a county road if it's part of Box Elder?
That is a county road that goes through Box Elder.
Wow, I think we're, we're already getting stiffed on that deal.
All right, come on.
It's a state highway. It's a, it's a state highway, right?
Let's stick to Sheridan Lake Road. That's what.
Well, this is all part of the package.
No, 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 let's stick with where we're at.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. DeSanto.
Tom, remind me again why we wanted to work from 385 back rather than starting the.
Originally.
The urban phase first and working our way out.
Originally, when I wanted to do the three eighty-five back was because of purchasing of right of way. We have most of the right of way in that three, in that first section already. It has been approved by the Forest Service. And then the next section is the overlay. I don't need to buy right of way. That was the reason I was pushing that one real strong. There's only, as I remember, there's only six landowners I'd have to deal with out there. I could get the right of way in a reasonable amount of time, get the construction going, get it done. We have eighty-four landowners in the fir-, in that first section. Over there where Commissioner Busker is talking about. That's gonna take some time. If we do the whole project, it'll be a big push to do all the right, get all the right of way and get it taken care of. I figure it's a year to two, year and a half to get all the right of way. And that was the main push that I wanted for the other. It also is a very expensive part from three eighty-five in. Because that is where most of my rock excavation is. It's a very expensive portion because of the rock ex.
Mr. Chair. You know, I, I drive Sheridan Lake Road all the time. And to me, the more danger, and, you know, if we wanna focus on preventing accidents and. And that kind of thing, the more dangerous and, and actually more, uh, unstable. You can correct me if I'm wrong. Part of the road, uh, is from just about Red Rock. To probably three miles out to the, to the, whatever corner that is, that super hairpin corner. Uh, biker bob corner, I guess, is that what it's called?
Oh, I know where you're talking about now.
Anyway, um, that to me is, is the most dangerous section of that entire road. From three eighty-five coming back. Um, it's a pretty decent road. I, I mean, it, can it be improved? Absolutely, it can be improved. But, uh, but it, it doesn't seem, it, it's, it seems wider. I might be wrong. Um, less curvature than, than that urban section going out. And, and except for during tourist season, summer, boating and all that stuff. Um, it's receiving less traffic out there than, than. Up to biker bob corner. So. I'd lean towards going the other direction. I mean, I understand your, your viewpoint.
Thank you. I think my intake on this is from our previous meetings. Is, you know, I can understand we're prioritizing and maybe we, I've heard that maybe we should go back to the sections and just do these ones and that one. And from my perspective, when we do piecemeals and put off and wait and stuff gets, keeps getting kicked down the road and producing, they're not getting done. I think we've identified Sheridan Lake Road as, as a high priority need, very high priority. And I'm in support of, of moving this forward for the whole thing. Because I, twenty years from now, there, it, or even ten years from now, it, it's gonna need it. Our, our economy, our population and so forth, and even the traffic that's going, the development that's going on out there is gonna increase. My, my thought process on this was from our last meeting, it was a lot, seemed to be more of a discussion over how much to keep in our reserves and if we wanted to use that. Funding, tie that up for as long as we did. I think Tom's made it very clear, we've been saving for this for quite a few years. Your predecessor before you and so forth. And I think what they're looking at trying to do is to get this done because it is one of our major roads. My opinion on this is, is I think we need to move forward with the whole Sheridan Lake Road. At the recommendation of, of. Put Tom and state in our reserves at, I think it was seven million. And then using the rest at zero percent interest for, I think he said, ten years. I'm not making a motion because I spoke, so, but that's where I, I, I'm at right now.
Chairman.
This is Hickok.
I think, to me, that makes sense. Um, because of the timeline, I mean, just seeing and working in infrastructure, um, in different areas and then going to the state with Tom. Uh, for the meeting. It makes sense to do the whole thing at zero percent interest and. He's telling us as the highway department manager that if we keep seven million in there. In his reserves, he can still do this road. He'll be okay for that timeline for other projects. Because remember, he's also gonna get more money in his reserves in different areas from an other, hopefully, entities. So he has five point five. He said he'll, he has seven in reserves and we'd get eight from the state. It's a huge road. It's, it's a road that's well-traveled, one of our most traveled roads, if I'm correct.
That is correct.
Two roads in, in Pennington County. It was that one and I, I can't remember the other one.
Nemo Road.
Thank you. And when I talk to the state, um, it makes sense also because of what Tom said. And that's why I thought it was a good idea because, and. Go from three eighty-five because of the, uh, game fishing parks. You know, the, the right, right of way, and then overlay is a no-brainer. And then go into the other areas because by the time he gets the right of ways, he will have those two parts done. And then he will be working on and still probably in the process trying to get the other eighty-four on the last section. So by the time he gets to that end, closest to town, um, hopefully he has all that and he can finish that project. That might be three or four years.
I'm gonna have to correct you on this. If we go the full width, full length of the road, I have to have all the right of way before the state will release any monies.
Okay.
So it will be a major push on our part to get that right of way. Because they will not let us spend a dollar until everything has been, neither will the feds.
Okay, so the timeline on that would be how long to get that right of way then?
I'm hoping a year and a half.
So by that time also, we, we will have more in reserves?
This fund will build a little.
Okay.
Each year, each year it builds by about six hundred thou-
And when do we start getting, or have we been already getting that extra, I wrote it down last time, monies? When does that start coming in? Or has it already?
It's already been coming in. That's what this fund is being built with.
So then he also will have more that he will be getting in the next year and a half, two years while he's getting this right of way. Does that make sense? So it's a no-brainer for me because you're also at zero percent interest and you're gonna get one of our major arterials in, in Pennington County done. So I guess to me, all that made sense in the long run. And I know the wheel tax and all that, Mr. Busker, um, in agreement. But, um, we didn't get it. And we still need this major arterial done.
Yeah, but, Mr. Chairman, but, you know, your argument about we, we need to get the, uh, uh, all, all the property bought. The reason we started at, uh, three eighty-five was because we already got it bought. Well, we can't start there until we buy it all anyway. So that's, that's a bogus argument.
No, I'm just saying, if that was the reason I proposed it before, was because we did already have most of the right of way. That I, why I wanted to start.
But he's the highway director, guys. This is what he do, he does.
Played out his plan for him, so.
Okay, okay.
Mr. DeSanto.
Okay. Till that I clarify what you just said, Tom. If we approve, and I lean towards approving the whole road. I, I don't wanna do it piece by piece. I wanna do the whole thing. I wanna get it done. But what you just told me, if I'm hearing you correctly, is that until you've secured. From three eighty-five to Red Rock Golf Course.
It's to, uh.
Good limits, probably. Alberta Drive.
Alberta Drive.
Alberta Drive, until you've secured all of the property rights from there to there. We can't get any of the federal or state funding?
State and federal funds will not be released until we have the right of way.
So how are we gonna complete the project if we're not getting this?
We, that's why I said it'll take about a year and a half to get all the right of way.
Could I answer something? Um, you have.
Are, are you done?
It's, it's to his question. Sorry, sir.
Why? Tom, are you done? So I am understanding it correctly.
You are understanding it correctly. That's why I said it's going to take us about a year and a half to get all the right of way.
Very good. Okay, you're okay, go ahead.
During, during, I'd like to clarify one thing too. During that year and a half, we keep adding to the five and a half million that she talks about.
We do.
We do. Each year, we get another. I can't remember the exact numbers, but it's a little over seven hundred thousand dollars added to it.
In the SIB.
In the STIP, yes.
And you will be spending that on other projects?
It, no. That's going to this job.
Okay.
Mr. Hickok would like to address a question.
Chairman, they won't commit the funds if it's like Rogford. Or they move forward on those funds knowing that we're gonna take them once we start the acquisition. They cannot take the money back, in my.
No, they will not.
But if we do not start securing the right of ways, just like Rogford Road. Then we could lose those funds because.
These are our funds. What they would do is if we were to kill this job, they'd start paying us that money. In piecemeal. This is, this fund is our savings account.
Five point five?
Yes.
Okay, sorry, Mark, I thought you were doing.
Nope. I get it. I understand.
Mr. Farby.
Biker Bob's, Alberta Drive or Alberta Avenue, whatever it's called. How much right of way have we acquired?
None yet, because we have not got the plans completed and ready for it. That is what I came here for. Because get the authorization so we can start purchasing right of way and finish the plans.
Follow up. Give us a date. Give us a date when you think we will start acquiring right of way.
When I get the approval from you, I will notify the, the, uh, consultant. And I will, within a month, we will probably have a public meeting to start the process. Within a month or two.
Let me ask the question again. When do you anticipate start acquiring a right of way?
Within a month or two.
Of when?
Once I get approval from you.
Today.
Today, if you approve it.
I give up.
Mr. Chair.
I give up.
I have one more question. Then that money's gonna come from your reserve account. The money to buy this stuff is gonna come from your reserve account then?
No, the, I have budgeted for the right of way.
In your budget?
In my budget.
So the, the twenty million isn't even correct. It's gonna be more than that.
It's a little more than that because I gotta buy right of way.
Twenty point, twenty-one, he said.
Keeps going up. You're right, every year goes up in cost, John, it is.
Okay, there's been live discussion. Is there, can we get a motion?
I would move to approve, moving forward with, with, uh. Securing those right of ways. Are we also voting, are we also needing an approval of what we're keeping in reserves and what we're not?
No, I think the motion should be, we, request for the commission to approve the financing of the project as presented and allow the consultant to proceed. With the plan of preparation and right of way procurement. Is that the proper motion?
That'd be correct. This allows us to start the right of way procurement.
And in my motion, all I'm approving is the cost of this beginning. This process of seeking right of ways. I'm not approving twenty-one million dollars. In my motion right now, am I? That what I need?
You're, you, you would be approving what the financing, the financing would be to use the, the money coming in from the states or yes, you would be doing more. You would, you, yeah, you'd be using the STIP forms with the motion that's suggested. To move completely forward. Because he's gotta be able to give it to the consultants to start, to get things started to proceed. You gotta have. The funding to do it.
Right now, our plans are at ninety-five percent complete. We're at the stage where it's. We have to buy right of way and finish the plans.
And I think at any time that can change, if I'm correct. I mean. It's not like you're gonna be writing a check for seven million dollars tomorrow and we're paying it back. It's, I mean. You gotta get the right of way before anything, any money's gonna be expended one way or another. So you're gonna be coming back before again.
When we let the project, yeah.
Yeah, when you let the project.
Mr. Chair, let me ask one more set of questions.
I think Mark was still thinking.
Go ahead, George. I'm still thinking.
George.
That's right.
Mr. Farby.
Prelimarily, have you looked at the right of way? I know it's not a finished product of the plan. But it's pretty close enough that you've looked at the right of way. Have you contacted those folks in, in anticipation of how much eminent domain may or may not occur?
I have not contacted the landowners, no. I've had some of them contact me wondering about it, and I've talked to them about it. I figured it was premature to talk to the landowners until I have approval to move forward.
Do you anticipate any eminent domain?
I hope not. I, I can't say yes or can't say no.
No. I, I understand. Until you, you know which way you're going, you, there's no sense of, of getting people excited about whether they're gonna sell or not, or give.
And there is a certain procedure we have to go through because of the federal monies with the purchase of the right of way.
I think we're in the same boat as where we were two weeks ago. We, I, I still believe that the motion on the floor is probably the correct, or one hasn't been made yet, but I think the correct motion should be the commission to approve the financing of the project as presented. And allow the consultant to proceed with the plan preparation. And the right of way of procurement. I think that's gonna answer a lot of the questions that we're trying to get answered now. Then he can move forward with trying to get, see where we're at with the, the right of ways and so forth. But, um. That would be, uh, my recommended motion be made.
Well, Chairman.
Mr. Hickok.
Here's the bottom line. This could be, so you have thirteen million and then seven, that's twenty-one million. He said. Twenty million and then some of those right of ways up to, I'm guessing, a million dollars altogether, maybe it's more. Bottom line is, um. When I make the motion, I'm trying to figure out, you can say financing, but that's. I'd like to know the amount we're saying financing. I mean, I wanna know the numbers when I'm making the motion, is what we're trying to say. So are we doing the five point five, the eight, the seven? Tom, what is the financing? Thirteen million, like you said on this, would be SIB or STIP funds, which would be five point five. And basically eight million, and then reserves at seven? That's my motion?
What I am requesting is our STP funds, which is, would currently be five point five.
Okay.
Seven million out of my reserve and then borrow what we need for the other portion when, once the project is let. They will allow us up to ten year, ten years worth. I don't think we're gonna need all ten years.
But what I'm saying is, should I make the motion for eight million at this point on SIB?
I, yes.
Okay, that's what I'm saying. So I don't know if I could make a motion, but so it'd be the five point five, the eight. After SIB and seven million our reserves for Sheridan Lake Road and start the right of way acquisition, acquisition, whatever you call it, right?
I don't know.
If the construction goes to two thousand twenty before we start it, we can add another seven hundred thousand onto the five point five. Because this is figuring for nine, for two thousand nineteen, letting and construction.
You go ahead and make that motion.
Okay, so.
Please, please.
We are requesting the commission to approve the financing, five point five at a STIP, eight million SIB, seven million of our reserves. Of the project as presented and allow the consultant to proceed with the plan preparation, right of way, procurement.
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all.
Oh, please, roll call.
Roll call, vote, all in favor? Well, sorry.
Buskerud?
No.
DeSanto?
Yes.
Farby?
No.
Hickok?
Aye.
A cry.
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Okay, folks.
I've been motioning for ten, ten.
Ten minute break.
Ten minutes, good.
All in favor, ten minute break. Can you keep us saying aye?
Aye.
As supposed.
All right, folks, looks like we're back. Everybody's here. We don't need to come out of break or vote, so we'll introduce Ms. Cassie.
Good morning, Cassie Bullstead, Assistant Planning Director. Um, the Board of Commissioners uses a consent agenda to act on non-controversial and routine planning and zoning items quickly. The consent agenda is. The consent agenda is acted upon by one motion and vote of the board. Items may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda at the request of a board member or a citizen. The consent agenda for planning and zoning contains the following items. Item A, layout plot eighteen oh seven for Kenneth Smith. This was continued from the May first, two thousand eighteen Board of Commissioners meeting and is recommended to be continued to the September eighteenth, two thousand eighteen Board of Commissioners meeting. Item B is road naming for Laredo Holdings LLC for the road name of Lasso Lane and approval is recommended. Item C is for road naming for Laredo Holdings LLC, um, to have a road name of High Noon Court and approval is recommended. Item D is minor plot eighteen fifteen and subdivision regulations variance eighteen oh five for Laura Pankraths, Ken Nash as the agent. Um, and approval is recommended. And item E is mining permit eighteen oh one for Pennington County Highway Department and approval is recommended.
Thank you, Cassie. Is there anybody from the public who'd like anything from the consent agenda pulled? Seeing none, would any, the board members want any of those items on the consent agenda pulled? Seeing none, entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Move approval?
Moved by Haddock. Seconded by Buskrude for approval. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Yes.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
All right, item F. Item F is a layout plot eighteen fourteen. This is a request to create lots one through eight of the Keystone Y subdivision. The applicant is Shriner Investment, Shane Shriner. Um, the surveyor is Spurlet Consulting. Um, as this property exists today, this is four separate lots. It's actually four mining claims. All these lots are currently zoned on General Agriculture District. The future land use designation is planned unit development sensitive. Um, currently, these four lots, um, Crown Point, um, MS twelve fifty-eight is nine point four one acres. Big Horse Load is seven point two four acres. Buffalo Fraction Load is three point one three acres and Bellevue Load is nine point two four acres. What they are proposing to do is break this into eight lots. Um, lot one would be a little over three acres. Lot two is three point three acres. Lot three would be three point one acres. Lot four would be six point two eight acres. Lot five would be three point one acres approximately. Um, lot six would be approximately four point three acres. Lot seven is just a little over three acres. And lot eight is three point oh five acres. They are also proposing a forty foot wide access easement through these lots um, to provide access to all eight of the lots and a hundred and sixteen foot diameter turnaround, um, at the end, which would be on proposed lot four. Um, the proposed lots currently do not meet the minimum lot size requirements, um, for a general agriculture district, so rezone and or lot size variance would be required. Um, this was routed through the interdepartmental review process. Um, couple items of note that need to be corrected on the plat, um, but nothing of a ton of significance. Um, there is an, actually an active ordinance violation on this property from two thousand and sixteen for a road that was constructed without an approved construction permit through these properties. Um, the prior landowner was working with our ordinance enforcement officer, however, never actually brought the property into compliance by obtaining a construction permit for this road. Um, this right here is what that road looks like now. Um, the, so the existing properties are accessed via a four service road off of Highway sixteen, um, which is this road right here. And then it turns into the private easement, um, which would be the proposed access to the lots that they're creating. So a construction permit will be required for this road. Um, highway does have some concerns regarding the width, um, slope, um, and a few other concerns about this road. So they do need a construction permit to make sure that it's constructed correctly. But for the purposes of a layout plant, staff finds no significant issues with this request. Um, so staff and the planning commission recommended approval of layout plot eighteen fourteen with sixteen conditions.
That'd be my motion.
Moved by Haddock, seconded by DeSanto. Any discussion from the public? Board? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous aye. Thanks.
All right, item G is another layout plat. This is a layout plat to create lots A and B of lot two. Um, or, yes, and lot B of lot four of Iowa Placer. Um, the applicants here are Ralph and Sandra Cruz. The surveyor is Heald Man surveying. Um, this property currently exists as one large property, which is seven point ninety-two acres, zoned highway service district. Currently contains, um, some storage units and a caretaker's residence. Um, as they are proposing to break this off, um, they are doing, um, lot A of lot two of lot B of lot four of Iowa Placer and lot B of lot two of lot B of lot four of Iowa Placer. Um, this was routed through the interdepartmental review process. Again, nothing of significance came back. Um, however, the register of deeds did have a comment on what the proposed legal description should be, which, um, will be, is included as a condition of approval. Um, so the applicant's request appears to be in harmony with the county's current and future land use designation for the proposed lots. Um, and for the purposes of a layout plant, staff didn't find any significant issues with this request. So staff and the planning commission recommended approval of layout plot eighteen thirteen with nine conditions.
Mr. Haddock.
Ms. Cassie, you have a red line around pink. Is it commercial highway service or is there a reason, is that like a warning that it's commercial in highway service on the land designation?
Oh, that red line around there on that zoning map right there, that's just, um, what our mapping system puts around a property to identify it. It's just the outline of the property. It's zoned highway service.
I guess I've never seen that, so.
Yeah, it's zoned highway service.
I, I was just wondering if you were trying to say it was commercial with, it's already commercial, but we're putting highway service in there.
It, it's highway service right now. They're just subdividing it into two lots.
Thank you, Ms. Cassie.
Any further discussion from the board?
Move for approval.
It's moved by DeSanto. Seconded by Buskrude for approval of layout plat PL eighteen dash thirteen with nine conditions. Is there any comments from the public? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Item H. Um, item H is first reading in public hearing of major planned unit development amendment eighteen oh one. This is for Deerfield Cabins LLC. Dion Weena is the agent. Um, this was actually continued from the, um, June seventh Board of Commissioners meeting at the request of the applicant. Um, I believe he is here today. This is a major planned unit development to amend the existing PU D to allow the residents that exist on lot forty-three um, to be used as a vacation home rental. Basically what this is, is this property has been zoned as a planned, or there's three properties that have been zoned as a planned unit development since two thousand and four. Um, the applicant, um, is now wanting to use the residence that's on lot forty-three as a vacation home rental. The other two properties, um, that are in this PU D are vacation home rentals. However, lot forty-three was specifically identified as a single family residence before, so he's just wanting to change the use of that um, into a vacation home rental. This item, um, has been continued several times for various different concerns, all of which it seems have been addressed. Um, there was concerns with, um, building permits that weren't obtained, addresses that weren't posted, um, parking issues. Um, but it does appear as of today that all of these issues have been addressed. As of this morning, I did also receive an evacuation plan and a fire mitigation plan, um, from the applicant. So I will be passing those along to the county fire administrator to make sure that he's okay with their fire mitigation plan as that was a condition of approval from the planning commission. Um, so the planning commission did recommend approval of this planned unit development amendment with, I believe it was twenty-nine conditions.
Yes.
That'd be my motion.
Moved by Haddock to approve major planned unit development PU eighteen dash one with twenty-nine conditions. Is there a second? I'll second for discussion.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. DeSanto.
I have a concern about the county fire administrator's comments, um, about, under no circumstance is this a structure suitable for eighteen people to sleep in?
Mark? Sorry, I can't hear you.
Sorry. I have a concern about something that the county fire administrator came up with. Um, under no circumstances is this structure suitable for eighteen people to sleep in and that it's thirty-six hundred square feet and needs a sprinkler system if it's gonna be a vacation home rental. Um, how has that been addressed?
Um, the applicant actually has been now, um, been limited to fourteen people um, per night with the Department of Environment and Natural Resources. We actually made him go through that process of obtaining, um, an approval from them. Um, they have limited him to fourteen people per night. Um, and I, Jerome left. Um, but, um, the applicant might be able to speak to how the other issues have been addressed. I just took over the staff report from Amy, so.
Did you want the applicant to address?
Please.
The applicant? Dion?
Dion, yeah.
Okay.
Um, when we first started talking about this, um, Amy had direct me, directed me toward Western State's protection company and they went out and looked at the property and then we were waiting for a report from them. I, we haven't seen a report from them. I talked to David Wolf on Thursday, I believe. And he was going to talk to someone at the county. At that time, I still thought Amy was the contact, so he was gonna call Amy. I don't know who he got a hold of, who he didn't get a hold of. I tried to call him again, um, Friday and Monday and haven't been able to reach him yet. So, we don't know what the status of that is. You know, his last comment to me was, um, you know, just do a fire mitigation plan and then, uh, I don't, I'll find out from the county what they're wanting.
So I think you're, I'm just gonna correct Mark. What you turned in this morning was a fire mitigation plan?
Yeah, I had, I had sent it to, I, I still thought Amy was working. Um, I had sent it to her last week and then, yeah, found out that yesterday morning that she wasn't working here. So then, um, sent it to Cassie. Uh, was that this morning?
Yes, yep.
So, that was just this morning. Um, so yeah, a lot of people haven't had a chance to see it yet because of that, so.
Mr. Chair, Cassie, have you heard any follow up from Jerome?
Um, I have not. I know there was some discussion at the planning commission level about the sprinkler system and the concern, um, that it might not even be something feasible or possible. The last thing I remember is that, um, there would need to be like some fire flow studies and things like that done on the well. Um, because it's actually just on a well system out there. Um, so there was some discussion at the planning commission level that it might not even have the flows adequate enough for a sprinkler system. That's the last I remember.
So the new fire mitigation plan that was submitted, you don't know whether or not Jerome feels that that's adequate?
I have not sent it to Jerome yet. I just got it this morning.
Thank you.
I'm trying to remember this from the planning commission and didn't we reduce this down for the number of app, I mean, like you said, from eighteen, as Jerome was talking down to fourteen and we've had the discussion over the fire flow and the wells and so forth. By reducing that number, I think, and the litigation and, and parking, you, you've addressed all the other stuff. The parking.
Correct.
The egress, the in and out, that was one of the biggest problems too. And I think by reducing the numbers, I think, was one of the biggest concerns, the number of bedrooms and so forth. Am I correct?
Yes, originally it was requested to be a seven bedroom vacation home rental.
Yeah.
Um, he went through the process of asking for a variance as our ordinance for vocational rentals limits it to five bedrooms. Um, that variance was denied, so he is limited to five bedrooms, but it's my understanding that there's like a, a unit downstairs that can be locked off that has two bedrooms in it. Am I correct?
It, it's just the basement.
Yeah.
Can be, um, shut or the, the bedrooms can be locked. However, that would work best.
Yeah.
Yes. I think, I'm just, for the commissions, I just remembered this coming up and that was one of the, he asked for that variance and then decided, we went through all this process and he just went back to the normal, to the five. And so he's just trying to do what's, what's required of any normal.
And the ordinance reads that you can, five bedrooms is the maximum and then fourteen people, so.
That's where they come up with the fourteens.
Yeah, that's the ordinance.
Okay. Any further discussion? Mr. Verby.
I've asked before and I guess I'll ask again. PU D, that's the entire development out there, correct?
Yes, this PU D has three lots in it.
Four. Yeah, you own all of them or just the house?
Uh, there's four lots on it and I own, or my company owns two of them.
So shouldn't that PU D been broke up?
Um, it was originally done as four lots, so he's just requesting to amend it for one lot.
The twelve two ninety-one is, um, the other one that we own. And then the twelve two ninety-five and the twelve two ninety-seven are separate owners for those two.
PU D says unit. Unit means like one. So is there one overall corporation, LLC, whatever that has management or jurisdiction over that one unit? It's two different units now, at least two different units. But we're calling them one at.
There's an agreement that was made for like the road easements and things like that in the beginning. I have copies of those, but as far as oversight of the whole thing, no. The PU D as, as initiated, originated is now gone. Thank you. I have no further questions.
So it looks like he's met the requirements from the past. I would entertain a motion that comes to us with, from the planning commission recommendation for approval. Did you, was there already a motion?
Yeah, you, she, and you seconded for discussion.
Oh, I did. Okay, so we do have a motion on the floor. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed?
Uh, no.
Motion carries with one no from George Verby. Right?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Cassie.
All right, the last item here. Um, this item was continued from the last Board of Commissioners meeting. This is the first reading in public hearing of rezone eighteen oh two and comprehensive plan amendment eighteen oh two for Eric and Heidi Hendrickson. Um, Spurlet Consulting is the agent. Um, this is a request to rezone fifteen point zero five two acres and three point three eight five acres from general agriculture to low density residential and to amend the comprehensive plan to change the future land use from general agriculture to low density residential and limited agriculture district. Um, it's my understanding that there was extensive discussion about this at the last meeting. Do you want me to go through anything as a refresher?
No.
Okay.
Ms. Haddock.
I actually made a motion if we could to continue it because of the, um, Hundred Deer, the floodway, um, five hundred, because of septic and some other issues I had. So I met with Kale and Paul, if I recall, as Paul first. And then I met with Jackie and Dwayne who live out there. So I met with both sides. And what I determined is that there's already three acres out there. Um, the Hundred Deer flood is way out. It's, there's just a little piece of some of those lots that have that Hundred Deer. But the septic would be fine in that area without causing any, um, problems. Um, and I also, with talking with Jackie and Dwayne, um, that there's already lots that are three acres that needed to be broke up. Actually, there's three houses that need to be broke up into three acres is what Mr. Hendrickson's doing. And told them that I didn't see an issue with three more acres based on the water and the, um, septic and stuff out there and that, um, there seemed to be a lot of development out there. I know some people have five, some people, because they broke down their like nineteen or eighteen acres. But a lot of people, um, are in that area and also believe in property rights. And Mr. Hendrickson, if we're, if the neighbors are okay with them breaking in that three acres and to make his land so it's, um, what's the word, compliance, in compliance, then, um, I didn't have a problem with the other three acre lots that were gonna be on that road. So, um, I did tell that to Ms. Jackie and Mr. Dwayne and I can tell you one thing too. I learned about chickens while I was out there too, because they have chickens. They have different kinds of rock chickens and different kinds of chickens. So we have a committee of large animal, whatever, committee. So I also, um, asked them a little bit more than just about this land and they were more in. in um willing to teach me about chickens and some other stuff. So thank you, Dwayne and and Jackie for your time and and Paul and Kale. I learned a lot on both sides. And then also with Kale, I drove on some other areas and just to see, you know, how the area is um moving forward. So we went into suburban residential, which was computer and some other areas out there where I can see that um I think the density is gonna increase in a few areas, too. So thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion from the board? I believe on the last one we did on this, there this comes with Planning Commission's recommendation to deny the rezone, and staff's recommendation is for approval of the rezone. So we have two options there. Um if we have no more discussion right now with the commission, I'll go to the audience.
I'm Florence Thompson. I spoke to you before. Uh we did present a letter representing seventeen properties, including the ranches that surround this area. And we were in favor of of uh taking the the recommendation of the Planning Commission, which was to deny this. And I I've since learned that the new comprehensive plan, which I understand is not in effect yet, does show this area as a ten-acre area. And one of the uh Planning Commission people ladies said that she saw this as a ten-acre area, and I believe there was agreement among the Planning Commission, those who voted the way they did, that they were seeing this as a ten-acre area. And yes, we do have some small lots that are out there on your map, but they're not they're not separate lots. They're they were done for financing, FHA um financing. And I maybe that's no longer the rule, but that was the rule at the time it was done. And also, some of those small lots were pre-existing ranch structures. Um one of those lots that I think is about five or six acres is an old existing uh home that has been there for many years, probably precedes the zoning ordinance. So um we just feel that it it's a ten-acre area. We'd like to see it stay that way. And if if you start dividing up uh this property, uh the Hendrickson property into three acres, there's plenty more there that can be subsequently divided into three acres. And it, as I said, it is in the ten-acre comprehensive plan. So it's it is just right on the line, but that's where the line is at Dawkins Road, which is um uh baseline road. And so that's where the division was made. And so that is that is the new comprehensive plan. I understand it's not in effect, but we just feel strongly that we've we've gone through the process. Um you know, the the Planning Commission went through the process, and the property owners came and talked to you, and we just feel that um that we have a good good reason for this.
Thank you.
And thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else want to speak on behalf? As I said, this comes to us with the Planning Commission recommendations to deny, and we have a recommendation from staff for approval of the rezone. Um we've and a lot of this is to bring it into uh.
Compliance.
And now you got me.
Compliance.
Compliance, cuz we've got some some lots that are three acres with homes on it and so forth. So as previous, we have two options. So I'd look I'd entertain for a motion for either or.
Motion to approve staff recommendation, meaning um planning staff of approval.
So your recommendation is is from staff. Approval of rezone uh PZ eighteen dash oh two subdivision comprehensive plan amendment slash SV eighteen dash oh two. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Is there a second?
Second.
Sec. The motion was made by Haggard, seconded by Bascor. Any further discussion from the board?
Sub- substitute motion.
Mr. Fairby.
Lot four, five, six, and seven are currently occupied, and my memory is right, the buildings are decades old.
Mm-hmm.
Looks like we're planning staff and Planning Commission were trying to solve two problems or address two different issues simultaneously. I will put back in my substitute motion is to take lots four, five, six, and seven and declare them legal non-conforming.
Mr. Chair.
Second, you got a second.
I'll second for discussion.
Second for discussion. To take four lots, four, five, six, and seven, legal non-conforming is the substitute motion. Mr. DeSanto.
Commissioner Fairby, explain a little more in detail what this achieves.
Mr. Fairby, okay with the question?
Yes. It separates the two issues. We're we're trying to merge two issues. And number of years ago, I was out looked at that property, and uh the lots, I didn't know they were lot four, five, and six, and seven. But anyway, that little, at one time, a little, I guess, for lack of a better word, little community, old, 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 and they're legal non-conforming in my opinion. So let's just designate them. We're gonna bring them into compliance by the stroke of the pen. So let's make the stroke of the pen legal non-conforming, and then address address the other issue separately.
The lot eight?
The lot, the whatever else was part of this, separate it out and address that separately.
Would this, go ahead, Mr. Chair, would this accomplish what they need to accomplish as far as the existing structures and existing property?
Well, what they're requesting with this rezone doesn't really have anything to do with the structures. It has to do with the zoning.
Right.
So I I mean, the structures in and of themselves, the the status of the structures wouldn't necessarily change with what they're doing. Each structure would just be on its own separate lot. I mean, if they were a legal non-conforming structure before, the status of the structure wouldn't change, just the status of the land is changing cuz they're subdividing it. It's not gonna be one big lot anymore. It's individual lots.
I understand that.
So they're kind of, I mean, by subdividing it, they're the ones who are creating the issue with the zoning.
But does the legal non-conforming allow them to go ahead and subdivide those particular pieces of property that already have those structures on them, that they're having an issue with as far as meeting the regulations?
Well, I guess if you, I mean, I guess if you guys were to declare the zoning legal non-conforming, then um it would, I mean, then yes, I guess technically it would fall under our legal non-conforming section of our zoning ordinance, so it would be in compliance, technically.
Correct.
Is that what you're asking for?
Not something you've ever done before.
Correct. We're not gonna physically, we're not gonna, everything that's gonna be done's gonna be on paper with a pen. We're not gonna physically move those structures, and I totally disagree with it. Without the structures, designation doesn't make a lot of difference. Just pasture then. So the structures are what this is all about, those folks living there in those structures. So let's declare the entire area, little community, whatever you wanna call it. Just just declare that area, that specific area, legal non-conforming. Be done with it.
Chairman.
Yeah, Ms. Ms. Haggard.
Okay, so we're not gonna bring it in compliance. We're gonna make a new rule for these people. That, tell me what lots, George, by chance, that you said?
Four, five, six, and seven.
Okay, so guys, we're looking at lot one, two, three, four, five, six are gonna be three acres. Four, five, six, and seven is, so Kale, I need some help. Do you have your map up here by chance? And tell me, this is um by your experience, what does non-conforming and what rules does that start setting forth? It's for actually both of you, what that actually means, because doesn't that non-conforming mean if you change something, which we're doing, you have to be in compliance? So we're making a new rule that we don't have to have people come into compliance? They we can just cause tell their property it's non-compliant and move forward?
The.
The craziest thing I've heard.
Your question was to Kale.
Yeah, it's Kale Magna, Spurlet Consulting, eight twenty-one Columbus. Um would you mind if I?
Yeah, no, go ahead.
We bring up the lots, Kale, so we know what you're talking about?
Yes, we're talking about, this is lot four here. We're talking about this lot, this lot, and these are the three-acre lots. And then there's this guy, which is right here, and it extends all the way down to here. So this is the large tract. Um so what we did going going into this is what we wanted to do is create actually conforming structures. So we went out and surveyed the location of every one of these buildings on this property so that we could make lot lines that would conform to your setback requirements. So we went in in it, and that's why you see lot lines that are sort of moving around. Well, they're gonna accommodate keeping the drain field on the lot and to make sure that we don't have setback issues to the the future lot lines. So the the intention is is actually to make it conforming with that LDR zone. So what you look at is setbacks from the lot lines for the LDR zoning. If we approve this, it's going to be, these lots are going to be in conformance with that. The structures will be in conformance with the zoning in the LDR.
So wouldn't it make more sense if you wanted to do that, then make your motion so it's more in to do with those, bringing in conformity, and then say the other three um that you don't want out there, basically? Because it seems more to make more sense to bring it in conformity, make sure for future people that have that out there, that it's in conformity, it's done right. And then if you don't wanna do the three-acre, other three-acre lots because of future land use or some other reason, then don't include that on your motion. I didn't get the four, five, six, seven when um it to me, it doesn't make sense. We we are here as commissioners to bring things in conformity, not take them out of it.
I think for clarification, clarification, I think what uh the motion on the floor is for is to is is a he's trying to get away into making those legal non-conforming and leaving the other lot site as is, is trying to get it to one unit is pretty much what you, cuz this is all about the zoning, from LDR and Ag, from Ag to LDR. That's what the bottom line is, is here today.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Bascor.
I I agree. I heard. I know what you're saying, but I'm not sure that we can do that. They they're requesting all those lots. I don't think we can just say, well, we'll do half of it, not the other half, because they might not wanna do it that way.
Right. Tis land.
Yeah. So the bottom line is, the motion, the substitute motion on the floor is to make four, five, six, and seven legal non-conforming in Ag.
Yep.
LDR. That's that's what I'm I'm gathering. And then the original motion is to bring it, it would bring everything into um. Excuse me. So I think, is there any more discussion before we go to the vote?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. DeSanto.
I guess I need further explanation of how one is better than the other.
Yeah.
Especially if we want if we want to, and maybe Ron's right, maybe we can't even do this, but if we want to be able to decide whether or not we wanna allow for subdivision of those larger lots later on down the road, um which way is the best direction to go if if we would like to?
Yeah, do you mind?
No, go ahead.
To determine whether or not we wanna allow for additional three-acre lots in the future.
Can I turn off that drawing on there?
Yeah.
How do you turn that off?
Uh, let's see.
So.
No, you should be able to read.
Explain, Kale, what the non-conformity means, and if you've ever heard of that, in order to bring something in compliance.
Well, if we if we're gonna try to lead this general Ag and go non-conforming, then we're basically, that's the situation we have right now. Um so what we what I think is the simplest way to go is to take, since this is, you know, future land use is LDR three acre, right now, if the future land use plan, LDR, not not the existing, the future one and not the one that's uh trying to get adopted, this is to take these three-acre lots, zone them for LDR, and leave these guys, which are in excess of ten acres, the cuz we're not, we're really trying to zone this in the LDR. These things, we wanna leave them, leave the zoning for the, you know, they're basically the ten acre, the limited Ag. That's that's the intention, is to take the ones that are sort of problematic and tie them together, the four lots down in here, and these three, tie these together as an LDR zoning, leave the limited Ag zoning on the rest of these parcels. These things are gonna stick general Ag. What it does, it's and and really what we're trying to do is the the rezone to LDR cleans up the whole mess that we've got. You know, because we shot the buildings, we know the side yard setbacks, it takes all these structures, which are kind of hodgepodge in there, puts them on their own lot, makes them conform to the setback requirements of the LDR zoning. So if we can rezone it to LDR, everything's in compliance. All those lots will be in compliance when we're done.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, on paper, physically, we're not doing a thing. Physically, we're not doing a thing. And that's what this folks been concerned about for any number of years, is having to do something physically, to move buildings, to do this, to do that physically. So all you're doing is by this is a stroke of the pen, and now all of a sudden, everything's hunky-dory. And I got a real problem with it.
Chairman.
Being in compliance by a pen.
I'm not mad. I just have to say something.
Okay.
So.
Ms. Haggard.
If they sell this, so it's good for Hendrickson, if you stay non-compliant, what happens when you sell it? What happened when he passes away to his family? He's doing this for a reason. He doesn't want it non-compliant. He's telling us no non-compliant. So why would we leave it non-compliant? And you pass away, and you didn't divide those lots, you didn't do what you needed to, and that's why he's doing it. He wants to sell his land, make sure, I'm thinking his family live out there in those other lots, and that's why he brought it in compliant, or he wanted to sell it. So to just come back and say, we'll just make it non-compliant and everything's good, stroke of the pen, um that that's.
Okay. Thank you. I think motion on the floor, we understand. The motion is for to make lots four, five, six, and seven legal non-conforming. This was a substitute motion. Any further discussion? See none, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Roll call.
I guess you're a little late.
Roll call.
I don't know who did what, so.
Who knows?
Let's do a roll call vote.
Bascorud?
No.
DeSanto?
Yes.
Fairby?
Yes.
Haggard?
No.
Lecrae?
No. That brings us back to the original motion, which is the staff recommendation recommending approval of the rezone eighteen dash zero two subdivision comprehensive plan, SV eighteen oh two. Am I right?
Yep, roll call.
Yep, roll call vote, please.
Bascorud?
Aye.
DeSanto? Fairby?
No.
Haggard?
Aye.
Lecrae?
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you, Cassie.
Thank you.
Next, that brings us items from chair and commission members. Y'all probably got the the schedule of the budget hearings. So starting tomorrow at nine AM, we'll be starting the budget process, and then it'll go on to Thursday and Friday. And Friday, don't have high expectations. It says about half a day, but we have outside requests, so that could be quite a while. So please, if everybody knows they're gonna be making, that's great. Is there anybody that might have to leave early, or is there anything that we should know about? Is there anybody that might have to leave early, or is there anything that we should know about?
Wednesday, I will not be able to make it.
Wednesday?
I'll be here Thursday and Friday.
Thursday and Friday, but Wednesday here?
I have a doctor's appointment at 10 o'clock tomorrow, but that'll probably take half hour at the most.
Okay. So we can struggle through those markers, was it Thursday?
I'll be here Thursday and Friday.
Thursday and Friday is just Wednesday, okay. And just for makeup, if you guys have any questions or concerns, please pass, email me, or text me, they might ask the department heads. And you can review the, the video to see where you left off and see where things went. Any further discussions?
I don't plan to be here tomorrow.
What's that?
I don't plan to be here tomorrow.
You're not gonna be here?
Not Thursday or Friday either.
All three days?
Probably.
Any particular reason?
Waste of time.
What'd you say?
Waste of time.
Waste of time. We, uh, for three years, we've, what we've said is just a rubber stamp anyway, and.
Well, it's a waste of time, it's a waste of comment. It's a waste of time, it's a waste of.
You gonna let me talk or not?
No.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else from the commission? For reports? Or, I have no other items.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. DeSanto.
I attended the conservation district, uh, meeting and found it very interesting. One of the things that they focused on quite a lot is runoff and, um, soil health, retaining soil health throughout the county. And one thing that we really wanted to, they really wanted to start focusing on is when we're building new neighborhoods, the amount of cement that we're putting down is causing a great deal of erosion and runoff and, and taking away, um, a lot of our, a lot of our soil health. And so the Ag community, obviously, we're the ones that were mostly there to, to speak of. But, uh, it affects, it affects, affects us as well. Our property values go down, the ability to sell a house, because we built a neighborhood two miles away, but it happened to cause flooding in this neighborhood that you already owned a housing. So in the future, we need to start paying a little closer attention to what we're approving as far as, um, neighborhoods and stuff like that, uh, so that we are not compromising, well, our largest producer of income in the state, which is agriculture. Um, the, the runoff also creates a great deal of, of pollution in our water table and in our water sources that the Ag, uh, obviously needs to water their cattle and so forth and so on. So I found it very interesting. Um, Scott came and talked about, talked a little bit about, um, invasive species, weeds and stuff, and how we need to get a grip on that. And we're, you know, continually trying to get additional money to address that as well. Community thistle wasn't one I was most concerned about. But, uh, what it does, one thing that was pointed out to me that maybe a lot of people don't know is when we, when these invasive, invasive species move in, many of these invasive species that, um, our livestock can eat. And they're pushing out the actual grasses and, and, and so, and growth that our livestock can eat. And that's why it makes it so important to address the, these invasive species, um, so that we're not losing grazing ground, which again is a huge part of our, of our, uh, revenue sources for South Dakota. So anyways, it was interesting and I enjoyed it and I learned a lot.
Good deal. Any other, any other words, Ms. Hancock?
Uh, fire service board, um, we had our human resource, John Merel come. Uh, thank you for coming, um, just to see what we do at our fire, fire service board. And, uh, his family for years has been, uh, volunteer fire service. So, um, that was really interesting, uh, to hear some of his background. So, uh, thank you for coming, John. And then, uh, Chamber, of course, they were all excited about the vote yes and told about statistics and things that they are moving forward with. Um, pretty excited about, um, economic, um, economic development and some other things. Um, Julie from, uh, Visit Rapid City gave some really exciting reports on different things that are happening in Rapid City. Um, then, um, for the fairgrounds, we're moving forward with the building for the stalling, some things, we're getting ideas. And then, um, also hopefully we'll get an economic impact study done. And that will help us for a lot of things for hopefully in the future, um, how we can show the civic center what we're doing, Rapid City people what we're doing, and how much we impact, impact the surrounding areas. So some exciting things happening at the fairgrounds. And, um, we're trying to raise the money for the economic impact study. So I think we're doing a pretty good job so far. Anyway, um, great boards, um, great discussion, and I enjoy listening to all the things that are happening. But thanks again, John, for your time.
Thanks, folks. I do have, uh, next July, I'm on the South Dakota Advisory Board for Civil Rights. We're gonna be having, uh, public hearings in Pine Ridge on the 27th and in Pier on the 26th on subtle effects of racism and so forth. Um, I'll, once we get all the agenda and the guests lined up, I'll present that to the commission if they choose to, to attend or not. One of the other things I did is, is if you guys look in your box, there is, uh, a sheet from NACO for their conference that's coming up in July. I think we've had a discussion that this main one was, we probably would not be able to attend or, because we're trying to get through the budget process and the funding and so forth. But this is some information for you to go over, you know, the main one next year is gonna be in Vegas. And I think we could set, get ready for that one. But I can tell you from my talks from Minnehaha County was, at the main conference, they send one person every year. And they're actually on committees and boards of NACO and, and, and give their input. And it would be just great if we had two of the biggest counties in South Dakota attending the NACO and working together to get some legislation changed and work done. Um, unfortunately, as I said, I think things have gotten right up to the minute this year. But I just want to put that on everybody's radars for at least this year. Or for next year. Um, other reports, I really don't have anything worth reporting. I do have one question for, for Mark. Mark, have you, do you have any updates on, on, uh, ordinance for, uh, I don't wanna say chickens.
Animal keeping?
Animal keeping.
Um, I didn't make it to this meeting on Monday. I made it to the last one, uh, the last one, basically, they, uh, we're still stuck on the size of, um, basically the space between a neighboring home.
Neighbor.
And, and as how to determine, uh, how close to that neighboring property line they can have their animals. And so we had a little bit of confusion and, and some deep discussion as far as what size of a lot to allow, how big the, the usable lot space without including the, the space of the home? How much usable lot space do we need to have in order to accommodate this livestock?
Okay.
And I don't know if they came to any conclusions this Monday, but last Monday, that's where we, where we basically stopped was, we were stuck on, um, lot lines. How close we could have our animals to those lot lines and, and what would determine, um, the boundary?
Yeah.
Whether you, you gotta build a 10-foot fence or, you know, that kind of stuff. Um, and I pointed out that by, um, restricting the distance, you're then shrinking the available space again, um, from, from, so you gotta kind of change the amount of space that, that's allowed again, but not by reducing that lot line, uh, distance.
Okay, thanks, I just wanted to get a little.
It's ongoing.
It's on, yeah. It's challenging. Thank you.
Chairman.
Ms. Hancock.
I also talked to Travis, and he said, um, that it's kind of hard to get everybody nailed down on a certain issue, because then some other issue comes up, and he's like, I don't know what to do. But, um, he's working hard at it. He's our, uh, chairman of our planning commission. And that's why I was like, after he talked about some of the issues that you had, it was nice to go out to Dwayne and Jackie's place also and have a little bit of explanation. They have about, what, 16 acres? But, um, just an explanation of how far they thought, you know, for chickens and different livestock, so.
Right.
It was pretty interesting.
Yeah, it, it, you're right. It's like, you know, I mean, all of you guys I know have worked on old homes. And it's like every time you pull a board up, you find a new problem. And that's what this, this ordinance is, this, uh, animal keeping regulations is, is getting into, is that every time we, we address one issue, it, another issue results from that.
That's all ordinance is though.
From that solution.
Every ordinance that seems that way, but.
All right.
Awesome.
Thank you, folks. Uh, items from the public. Somebody wish to speak? Um, we're willing to hear from you. Okay.
I don't think we should.
We'll go fast, items from the public now. Oh, I, I'm sorry, I skipped over approval of the vouchers.
Motion to approve.
Dang it.
I moved and seconded to approve the vouchers, 2002161748. Any discussion? See none, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Aye.
Two no's or one no? I only heard one no.
I oppose.
Two no's?
I oppose as well.
No from DeSanto and Fairby. Uh, no executive session?
Motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn, seconded by Baskerud?
Yep.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye. Aye, opposed. Unanimous vote for adjournment, thank you.